So, welcome, everybody. Are you guys all ready?
Voices ready.
Are your voices ready? You ready? So, a special treat tonight. We're going to start off, instead of the Pledge of Allegiance, to have our national champions show choir sing the National Anthem.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars should the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the moonbursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, doth that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
You guys will just wait there for a minute. Awesome. Awesome.
Call to order. Betsy, would you please call the roll?
I note that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Thank you. From closed session this evening, we have... Oh, I'm sorry. We need to... Motion to approve our agenda.
Move.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Brandon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? From closed session, we have closed session minutes of March 19th, March 23rd, March 24th, March 30th, March 31st, April 13th, 2015. And the action is to approve as presented or amended in closed session. In a motion to that effect. Thank you, Brandon. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Communications. Good news report. Our show choir has accomplished a phenomenal feat. National champions. That's not state, that's national, right? Is that right?
It is.
I think we just heard "why."
Uh-uh, we did. We did. We are so extremely proud of you all. You can tell right there, you know, you can hear how amazing they are. This is a program that has grown over the years. Mr. Geemar, when he came into our school district, I remember saying to him, "You have to get some videos out there. You have to show people what this is because nobody really knows what show choir is, or what they can do, or how exciting this program is." And we said, you know, "You've got to do it." And we have arrived. We are there because these kids have worked so hard. I wish they had room to dance for you because they're amazing. Their choreography is amazing. But oftentimes, when they dance, when show choirs dance as much as they do, you lose some of the vocal, you lose some of that quality. And these kids maintain that. That's why they're national champions. Because you can close your eyes and listen to them, and they're just phenomenal. And you can open your eyes, obviously, and be very entertained by them. And they're just phenomenal kids. And their vocals are top-notch, and their choreography. So, they've had a great season and all that. Mr. Geemar, just if you want to sum up what their season has been, I don't want to take your limelight from you, but...
Oh, no. You were... You're doing great.
But, obviously, culminated with a national championship. So, tell us a little bit about that.
Well, what was neat about Nashville is, you know, it's country, but it's pop country. It's the tradition of, you know, we performed at the Grand Ole Opry. I don't know if anybody in this room can say they've done a performance at the Grand Ole Opry, and that we had the opportunity, which is just amazing. And they still have a circle of where, the old time, the Loretta Lynn, and Dolly Parton, and, you know, all these standard country singers performed it. And the new ones honor that. Yeah. And a lot of these kids tapped it or kissed it. The grand ballroom curtain was down, and so they got to do that the first day. And that was kind of cool. In this, there's a lot of growth. I think we're standing in front of future school board members. I think we're standing in front of people who are going to make the difference, the ones who care. Music is just the vehicle. They know what excellence is, and they know how to work for it. So, yeah, we were very fortunate this year. We won four grand champions. We got a second place and a third place. We got many vocal, best vocal awards, best choreography awards, best combo awards.
Right.
It was quite an ordeal. And the caliber that was at Nashville, Hastings, Minnesota, hadn't lost for, well, basically five years. Fourteen competitions. They never lost best vocals, choreography, or grand champion. And they got fifth. Just to put it in perspective, we're not just on a local level, we're at a state level. Illinois is very strong. Illinois is extremely strong in show choir. And, yeah, I think these guys would love to sing and dance for you, but in here, it's not going to happen.
They could block out the street.
But, whatever.
They do have a show coming up this Saturday.
They do have a show this Saturday. We certainly invite all of you to attend. And they do a lot of the same things. We have, basically, three sets. And then we have a vocal jazz group. And they do a lot of specials that they work on themselves. So, showing at the high school.
At the high school, yeah.
We are very fortunate.
And you get desserts.
And we are very proud. You guys did a great job. It's amazing that we've got... That you guys have put this together for so long. Looking forward to it continuing. Good job. Start with the how we begin.
Good.
And we... Do you want us to sing the ballad?
We do. We do. So, the ballad is from their competition show, so we get a little taste of it, even though they can't dance around and show us everything else. A little teaser from their competition show, so we'd love to hear your ballad.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
(Singing) In my life, I never thought I'd get a second chance. I thought I was done, then I knew. No, I never dreamed I could have loved again. I placed my bet, and knew. I'm somehow still lost, somehow always lost. This time, it's new. Thank you for finding me, and thank you for the care. And shame on you for making me think that this life might be fair. You promised to love me, a promise you kept. And I won't be sorry that you said to leave and I left. I won't regret what I did, and though it hurts more than I could imagine, back when all the same, even so, I would love you all over again. Am I always starting over in a brand-new story? Am I always back at one after all I've done? 'Cause I burned all of my bridges and learned every last lesson too. So, how can I start new? I love our children both fiercely and well. When they ask about you, oh, Lordy, the stories I'll tell. And I won't regret the lies I didn't lead. I knew you, I loved you. Let that be all that I need. Say that it's fate, say it's foretold. I'm through with fighting it. I'm much too old. What the gods have to give, I'll take and I'll live and be bold. If we're always starting over every brand-new morning, then we're always starting out with the end in doubt. We can leave a life for tomorrow, or grieve all that we thought we'd do, or make each moment new. All that has happened is happening now. All that might happen is here somehow. All of the choices that made me me. All of the accidents yet to be. All that's ahead and all that's behind, it's all in the moment I make up my mind and open my heart. And start, and start. 'Cause we're always starting over every life we're living. Yes, we're always just awake every step we take. And my love, our life is over, but love, I'll make you one last vow to start over and over and over somehow. My new life starts right now.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And come back next fall.
We'll start everywhere.
Look at the logo up there. It says, "Engaging Excellence Every Day in Every Way for Everyone. Experience Val Chatham." And I just think we experienced excellence. You guys are phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're going to give all these out, but if you want to distribute them later on, so that you don't have to all stand there for so long. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We are so extremely proud of you guys. Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
Sharing the gift of us.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys.
Sounds awesome.
You were awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
It's cloudy.
Thanks, guys. Great. Yeah. Sure, Mr. Blakeman will sing for us. We'll put him on the spot. Anything after spring? I know. I'm sure Mr. Blakeman will sing for us. We'll put him on the spot. Anything after spring? I know.
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, this district never ceases to amaze me, and it's not often that we sit up here and have so many good things happening at the same time. But you take a step back and start to look around. I can't wait for Mr. Lee's talk at graduation, because every year, it goes down the litany of accomplishments of the students after their career, going through Glenwood. And, you know, we've got great families and great parents and great, great kids, and we're always going to be a strong district because of all of that. So, whether it's in the Scholastic Bowl, or in the show choir competitions, or on the athletic fields, this district and our educators, our professionals, and our students continue to excel and be the best of the best. And with that, we move to 4.2. On the basketball court this year, we had a very special player and a coach with an extremely good year, both named, receiving honors in the Central State Eight. Was it four regionals in a row that we've come up with and coaches come up with? And all the kids are part of that, and all the assistant coaches are part of it. But tonight, we'd like to recognize Coach Todd Blakeman being named CSA Coach of the Year. I think I have that right. And also Cole Harper, CSA Player of the Year. And that helped guide the team to CSA conference championship. That is an incredible feat that hasn't happened for a very long time. Congratulations, guys.
Coach, do you want to say anything about Cole?
Well, I'm going to say one thing about Cole, that he's not going to sing or dance.
We're waiting for that call.
Yeah. What a great young man. He finished his career with just having, I mean, all four years with what a raging old win. This year, when he's been part of the Central State Eight Championship Team Player of the Year. I just told Randy back there, I said, "After the four years I coached this young man," was it one problem I had? Was it the sickness his freshman year, was it? No, sophomore year. Other than that, loathed this young man, nothing but business. And I'll tell you, he deserves everything he gets, every athlete in the world, and just wishing the best. He's going to Minnesota State next year, and I know he'll contribute very well there, and I'm looking forward to watching him play. So, again, thanks for having us tonight, and Cole, thank you. And what a great year for the guys, and we have a meeting next week, so, you know, I'm still in the mojo right now, but we'll definitely have a lot more to talk about. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach.
You guys don't have to hang around.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Cole.
Unless you want to.
Congratulations.
Citizens' Opportunity for Visitors to Address the School Board Concerning Any Agenda Topic.
Good evening.
Could you state your name, please, sir?
Mike. I'm Bob Cox. I'm honored to serve as the current president of the Val Chatham Education Association. We just want to take a few minutes, and I'm here on behalf of our entire 300 or so members to thank the outgoing board members. I know what a commitment it is, believe me firsthand, I know what a commitment it is to spend week after week sitting behind that table. And we appreciate all the work that you've done over the years, making, you know, tough decisions that impact our kids every day. I've known Jim for a long time, probably his entire, was it 14?
14 years.
14 years. I've been involved with VCA, and I've worked with Jim lots and lots of times, and so appreciate all of your years of service, Jim. Steve, you're coming back, so I thank everybody, but I know you're coming back, so thanks for running again and making another commitment. Rick, thank you. I know we worked a lot together last year on negotiations, doing it again this year. Now, you get to skip out on us. So, on behalf of the entire, my entire membership, thank you very much for your service to the district.
I can only say this has been a privilege and an honor to work with each and every one of you and everyone here at the board level, so thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I appreciate it. And when Bob and I, when it gets kind of contentious, or we got a little time to talk during those negotiations, we all, we never talk about negotiation if you talk about woodwork and turning pens and that sort of thing, so.
We're blessed with many professionals here, so thank you all. 5.1 through 5.10, Consent Agenda Items. Is there any item that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda this evening?
I'd like to pull 5.7. Minutes of Technology Committee Meeting, please.
Anyone else? So, looking for a motion to approve 5.1 to 5.6 and 5.8 through 5.10. Thank you, Brandon. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Betsy?
Yes, Cox.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Nusis.
Yes.
Whitesall.
It's Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes. 5.7. Minutes of Technology Committee Meeting, April 14, 2015. Susan?
Just a couple observations. Because there, perhaps we can include, actually, I'm requesting that we include the attendees that were at this meeting besides the regular tech committee members. We had several visiting board members at that meeting, as well as at least six members from Sentinel. And Jen knows who they were. And the other thing is, is that reading this more carefully, I was happy to see that the bidding from vendors, I presume, fell under the core switch. But my understanding of that discussion was that it was really bidding going forth, henceforth, not just for the core switch. But Jim and Brandon were there as well. So, what was your understanding of that?
I mean, I'm assuming, just from the way the minutes were written, it wasn't just the core switch. I mean, that's what I thought.
Okay. Okay, so it was beyond just the core switch. Could we then, perhaps, re-present these with some reflection of the fact that both Brandon and Jim and I understand it to be more than just the core switch? And the other thing that I would like to add, because I clearly remember Jen speaking about this, and that is, under other concerns, I'm requesting that it's a desire for all teachers to each have a device, because there was discussion at that meeting, it was very well-attended by all of the tech committee minutes members, that not, much to my surprise, not all of the teachers had devices. So, I'd like to add that comment as well, that it was expressed, that there is this need. It's more than a desire, it's a need. So, other than that, I thought they were well-presented.
So, typically, the minutes are written at a very high level, so...
Correct.
So, not every detail is covered, so...
Correct.
Make sure that we cover, you know, everything, but with the understanding it's not a verbatim word representation of the committee.
Well, Brandon, do you have any objections to some of my observations?
I mean, if you want to amend it, that's fine. I don't think it's necessary, but if that makes you feel more comfortable, I don't have a problem.
I don't understand what the, why they should be amended. I don't understand what the, what you're trying to get at here, Susan. Is there something that those minutes don't say that you think it should be in there? I don't understa... You know, they reflect what happened that day, and they, I'm not sure why they should be amended.
Well, do you not think that the committee members should be included on the committee minutes? Because that is the, actually, we can look at Robert's Rules of Order, if you would like, but I'm pretty sure that, actually, I am sure that that is the protocol that's required. But as to the actual points, the other two discussion points, I mean, it's fine. But they do need to be amended to include the attendees at that meeting. That, as you say, unequivocally.
I guess I'd have to go back and take a look and see if that has happened before.
It's happened.
If this is different than what has happened at other board meetings and other minutes like this.
Well, what do you mean, other board meetings?
No, other minutes of the technology committee or any committee. I'm not, I don't think we put all the participants that are on there. I don't think it's noted that all participants are.
Actually, well, actually, I was looking at that, Jim. Why don't you work it out with Brandon, then? You can review the research.
This is my last night. I don't know that you want me to work it. Are you giving me permission to come back, Susan? I appreciate that, if you do.
Well, I'm happy to have you agree with the minutes as you...
Well, I agree with them as are written. I agree with them as are written. And I would make a motion, if there's no more discussion, that we approve those minutes as written tonight. So, we have a motion, we need a second, to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion to second. Thank you, Lisa. Any further discussion?
I think they ought at least have the attendance. I mean, can't we amend them for who is there?
I have a problem. We can figure that out, Jen?
I can, yeah. And I think, actually, that occurs when we have the construction minutes.
Finance, we usually put people...
And finance, yeah.
So, then I can offer friendly amendment to include the attendees.
Yes, yes. I would change that.
So, there's a new motion?
Pardon me?
A new motion to approve is amended?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Jim. Second, Brandon. Any further discussion? All right, Betsy?
Carter?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitesall?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Moving on to new business. Before we go there, I have to say thank you to my family. Say thank you to my wife, Michelle, for all of her patience and supporting me through all of the last four years. And it's been a lot of time, but very valuable and rewarding. And thank you to my son, Zach, who has, you know, missed dinners and a few things like that, but we're going to catch up moving forward, so. Thank you, and thank everybody, everybody here. Jim, anything?
I'd like to say the same, although I have a couple more family members who showed up unannounced tonight. They came in from out of town.
Surprise.
My wife, Becky, back here, who, like Rick's wife, has endured hundreds of hours of meetings at over 14 years of doing this, and missed some family time in that with our daughter, Darcy, and her fiance. They met here. And my son, Lance, who came down from Chicago.
Nice.
And my mom, in the front row there, who came down from the Chicago area also.
That's wonderful.
Those two surprised me. I didn't know they were... Lance said on Facebook today that he was going to Las Vegas.
Yeah.
My mom was supposed to be going downtown to Chicago tonight or something.
So, is that maybe your gamble?
I assume he's a firefighter, and I assume that he was going to some firefighter conference out there, but no, he's shown up here. Couple other things. You know, there's been some discussions, some things going on here lately that I just want to, I want to put forth a couple of comments on. Number one, I know that we're, you know, as we all know, carried tenure resignation back in January. And I think I find it disturbing for this district that we do not have a superintendent yet named for next year. And I also, and particularly, we don't even, we haven't even interviewed anybody yet for this, and it's getting kind of late in the whole process. I don't think that we were served well by this methodology that, as a community, this methodology of waiting till the last minute, of not even, not making a decision probably till about June 1st, if even then, on finding a new superintendent for this district. This is a, it's a very, it's the most important position we have here, besides the board, because superintendent sets a direct, helps us direction for the community. And it's, I think it's disturbing to me, and I think... And it's, I think it's disturbing to me, and I think some other people, that we don't have that yet. Also, we have some, we've had some discussion in a couple of committee meetings about money, construction committee money, and also money for, as we talked about, technology. Technology is a high priority for this district. We have to get up to speed with the technology, because everything that we do, from the district office to the classroom, is based on technology and what we have to do with it. And I know tonight we've got a new technology director who is going to be named, is going to be introduced and voted on tonight. See him in the back there, welcome. And that, we have to get to the bottom of what's going on with that. And I think we've got a good start, we just have to keep going. And then money for other improvements that we've got. And if my recollection is correct, we've got, we've saved on our Phase 1 and Phase 2 construction projects, we've saved about a million and a half dollars in contracts and bidding that's been favorable to us on some other things that we've done. Plus, we still have our Phase 3, which also came in under budget. So we've got the money out there to do what we need to do to make this district the best it possibly can be, both on the construction side and on the technology side. And I think we need to use that money the way that we told the community we'd use that money for improvements, for building additions and improvements to the district. And those are all improvements that we've talked about. The one thing that I regret that we did not get through, and I'm not sure how we could have gotten it through, but I think maybe in the future something may happen, and that's the public-private coalition or combination of Fit Club, St. John's Hospital, and the Ball Chatham School District to have a facility here on our campus that would have offered our kids a lot of advantages, and offered the district a lot of advantages and the community. I think somewhere down the line, we need to find a way to come up with some, with another plan to do that through the district, and if it's with the help of, help of Chatham, the city of Chatham, village of Chatham, and the school district as a partnership, I think we need to look at some of those things. You know, as everybody likes to say, we're here for the children, we're here for our students, just like you saw tonight, our students do a great job when we give them tools and the opportunities to excel. And we have to keep going with that, because we are here for the kids, we're not here for any personal or private objectives that we all may have, it's for them. And the other is, I'd like to thank my fellow board members. Rick, you and I worked together as both as board presidents here, and I really appreciate your help and your counsel on things. Lisa, you know, I've known Lisa for, Lisa and her husband, I've known her husband, Carl, for longer than I've known Lisa, probably for about 20, 20-some years now. And I thank you for everything. Brandon, sorry I got you into this, buddy. But you'll do fine, it's a great thing. And Linda, I've known since, probably since my daughter was over at Ball Elementary, so it's a pleasure being working with you. Steve and Susan, good luck with everything, so. I think that's about all I want to say. It's, I want to thank, well, no, it's not all I want to say, because I want to thank Carrie for everything that she's done for this district. She's been instrumental in this district being where it is today. And I want to thank everybody in the back row back there, and a couple in the second of the back row, because if it wasn't for the team that Carrie has put together, this district would not be where it is. We have the best group of principals that we've ever had since I've been involved in this district. They are there, they know their buildings, they know their students, and they get the job done in the buildings. Randy provides our security out there and does a great job of making sure that everybody is safe. Jim Lovelace, who I've known forever too, and went to school with my wife here at Glenwood, you know, does the transportation side. And then Nate coming in here in the last year and doing everything. And where's Teresa and Jen? Back there, okay. Teresa, our, what do you do back there?
Hang around or whatever.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you can, right? So, on the personality side, Teresa. And Jen is kind of our jack-of-all-trades, she's been just about everything the last year, and has done a great job of doing it. Let her get back to her real job here coming up now that Josh is coming on board to, back to the special education side, so. Thank you to all you back there, it's great to see everybody back there when we're sitting up here trying to do the things that we do, so. Thank you very much. I forgot Joe.
Joe keeps it all together.
Thank you, Jim, and I echo your thanks to all of you out here and up here. Collectively, the kids from Chatham walk out of here with a lot of awards, with their heads high and ready for the next step in their life, whatever that may be. So that's what we're here, and that's what it's about, and I want us to all remember that moving forward, every day and every decision that we make, so, thank you. With that, 6 dot 1, election results from April 7th, 2015, election and proclaim winners. So the election results have been certified by Don Gray, Sagoma County Clerk, and are as follows. Steve Cop, 3,247 votes, Greg Yurovich, 2,869 votes, and Dwayne Sarin, 2,792 votes. Steve is re-elected, and Dwayne and Greg are replacing the outgoing board members, Jim Nusis and myself.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and the recommended action is to approve the election results from the April 7th election, certified by the Sagoma County Clerk's office and proclaim the winners. Steve Cop, Greg Yurovich, and Dwayne Sarin. Need a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Linda. Betsy?
Yes. Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitesall?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Yes. 6 dot 2, adjournments, send D.
And before we do, you know, both Rick and Jim have served as board president during my time here as superintendent, and I want to thank them personally for their leadership, as well as from the administrative staff, thank you, so, you know, for all you've done and putting the district's students first, you know, like you said, I mean, it's all kind of been said, that the leadership that board members provide offers programs that make kids shine the way that you heard tonight. You know, we're seeing, we're hearing them shine tonight, but we see it on the basketball court, we see it on the football field, we see it in the classrooms. And your leadership up at this table provides that for kids. And so the fact that you spend so much time volunteering, your time, lots and lots of hours when we negotiate and things like that, is very much appreciated. The list of the years that they served and their leadership roles, and Joe, we have a little something to thank you, Joe's going to bring me. She heard me. Okay, yeah. We thought these were really neat, they're clocks.
They're not set.
For your desk.
Yes, I was afraid I would screw it up, so. You have to take the box home because it has the
They are the neatest thing, they're kind of a conversation piece. And so it has their names on it and their years of service, and so it's just a way for you to remember your time here, and how much we appreciate you. And we do have a quick, when we adjourn, we have a quick, you know, we have some cupcakes and things for everyone to enjoy to welcome our new board members and say thank you to our outgoing board members, so thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all very much, it's been a privilege.
So a motion for adjournment?
Can I make a motion to adjourn? How do you say that? I never have known how to
Send D.
Send D, okay. We're going to do that. Motion. Thank you, Jim, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Betsy?
Yep. Nusis?
Yes.
Whitesall?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Some cupcakes?
Yes. Cupcakes and punch. Hi, how are you? Do you have a cupcake? Have a cupcake? Or two? Or three?
Darcy, listen, Darcy, that.
Don't be shy, we have a lot.
Don't do that. It's pretty cool, isn't it? Oh, here's mine. Oh, that's right? I did hear, I didn't know where it came from. They're not on the key fangs or not?
Did you get any messages today about this?
No, everything I did work here. Is that right?
Where were you reporting the time? I'm starting here. We got a meeting at 9:00. Meeting was Texas GBS, right? We usually have it Monday mornings, but they change it. It'll be really, it'll be your tech guys, your tech staff, which will be Joe, Marcus, Jim Chase, John Hopkins. And then we can replace them now. Jen will be there, Tommy there. Tammy usually shows up a little late because she has a class, so I forget, 9:10, 9:30, something like that, and then she'll show up. Typically, the reason for that is just sort of nothing, to get everybody in the mood as to what's going on from week to week.
Some we do, we kind of do a cabinet weekly meeting, so. And make sure, see where everybody's at.
And then I suspect they'll be looking for direction as to how you guys, they may start out by staying satisfied, like we just called a meal, and that kind of stuff. I suspect. I don't want to push anything on you, but anything you want to know, just ask me. Sometimes you'll benefit from having inside information. All you got to do is ask me.
I'm taking it out.
Among who?
Amongst some members?
Oh, born, oh, yeah. Big time, big time. The guy, the bone guy over there that's leaving, he's been around a long time, he served back in the, like, from mid-'90s, '95 to '03, and then he was out for a while, and then he got appointed to fill his spot. I forget exactly what happened at that time, but anyway, he was appointed to fill his spot. Oh, because the guy moved, the guy moved out, so he did that. And he was a pretty good buddy as well, as superintendent. I think he did some both in the But he and Susan Worley, she's They've been like this forever. So that's why when he went down, thank them, when he got in, he just went to Steve and Susan, that's who I Two new guys, those two guys standing right there, the guy in the white shirt and the guy in the jacket, those will be the two new guys. I don't know either one of them very well. The guy in the suit is actually files for you. Wanting the last So ask me about Because next Monday, all you get is go, hey, I'm a school, I'm like, I get those. You don't have the file for you? I know, what are you, I don't know, what the hell is in there? Joe down there, that's Nate in the suit, right behind him is Joe, kind of looking at you with their back against the wall in the doorway, not the woman in black, let them on there. She's the superintendent's secretary, always want to stand with a good sight.
She's a good person.
I've known her for 25 years, but she's a good person, you want to stand her in good sight, that's true. The arm that's just sitting down up on that up there.
Not a harm?
Yeah. She's a secretary of the board, she's a PR director. She's an open person, must have developed this idea as a person, I think this might have been someone making $60,000, $20,000 in that position. So there's a lot of resentment against her. Eric, Josh, are you still coaching in KDA?
That's up to you.
Oh, is I walk the way, if I walk.
And it wasn't just because of this, but they're in black tops, and if they go to place in Morrisonville, it's one of the places, it's like, even if it's at Rogers, right, but you have to go from Rogers to Morrisonville back to KDA.
What this happens on the highway is You guys were down last year, right? You had a great year the year before, though, right? It's just time. When you get to the high school, you'll meet a guy named David Hay, he's an assistant principal, he's at KC Brad. Now, you didn't go to KC either?
No, I did.
How old are you?
33.
I don't know how old David is, he's probably, I bet he's 10 years older than you, I'm going to guess, I'm not really guessing, but I'm going to guess he has, he's in that age, but yeah, he's a KC college. Have you met Randy yet? The black guy back there? He's our chief, he's our director of security for the district, retired state trooper, funny guy, funny guy. One day, he's telling me, he has an office at the high school, but you'll see him all over the place. He was telling me about a deal he had at middle school one day, the kid was on a bus, a sixth grader, causing a problem. Gets him off the bus and takes him over by the wall to kind of get him away from all the stuff, and the kid started to attack Randy. And the kid started to attack Randy. I mean, look at him. And Randy goes, yeah. That's when his day went, got real bad. Just like a church.
I tried to flicker the lights. I tried to flicker the light on. I'm doing good.
So what type of college are you in?
You'll see the phone down. Are you asking? I've got a Gillon.
As I was drinking that, it was gonna go in my nose. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I don't know.
Not heavy, but so. Oh, I had to go drink the water. Refrigerator carries on.
I feel so much better, doesn't it?
Trust me, I'm gonna try to remember all the texts you guys. Just don't open it, so people can read it, because you'd probably be obscene.
Wow, these are much better than the trunks out there.
Unless you get, you get one.
I know, there's one that's bad. Linda, do you want to introduce your vice president? It's Lorley, to give the oath of office.
Lorley, this is Lorley for Brian Stevens, and she's here to administer the oath of office.
Yes, I am, and it's been our firm's honor and privilege to administer the oath to previous board members. And from the demonstration of talent tonight, I think that those were certainly successful terms in office, so I wish the new board members just as great a success. So if you would raise your hand, rise and raise your hand. I state your full name.
Graduate.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
Of Ball Chatham Community Unit School District number five.
Of Ball Chatham Community Unit School District number five.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests.
I further swear that I will respect taxpayer interests.
By serving. By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
By my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right.
And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board. Retaining the right.
To seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
To seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you, you are now sworn in as members of the Board of Education of Ball Chatham Community Unit School District number five.
Thank you.
I wish you the best of luck in the ensuing years.
Thank you, Lorley.
The next is the selection of a president pro tem. Secretly, that's the superintendent. We need a motion and then a.
I'll move that. Mrs. Ruby, be the president pro tem.
Second.
Yes, Carter.
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Zirin?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll call roll for the new. Betsy, will you call the roll?
I know that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Thank you. Our next item of agenda, of business on the agenda is the election of officers. Nominations are now open for the president, the office of president.
I'd like to nominate Linda Carter.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Steve Cop.
I accept the nomination, thank you, Brandon. And as I look back on my time in this district, I counted up, I've been to about two hundred board meetings. That's a lot of board meetings. I've also had the privilege of serving the teachers, as a teacher, as an administrator, as a board member. And I've served with and under seven superintendents. And you know, when I reflect back on that, there are things that I would like to emulate from many of those people that I have worked with, many of the superintendents that I have worked with. And there are some things that I most definitely do not ever want to have happen again. One of the things that the board president does is they are speak, they are only one person on the board. They have no more authority than anybody else on the board. They have no more vote than anybody else on the board. But they are the spokesman for the district. And as a spokesman for the district, as our oath said, it is the responsibility of the spokesman to give not their opinion, not what they think should happen, but they should give the majority of what the board feels. The board needs to act as one vision. And as a spokesman for the district, that is an important thing that our board president needs to do.
I accept my nomination also.
Okay. Since there are two candidates, are there any other nominations for president? Okay, the next step is to, you'll do a hand vote. So all in favor, let's see, Linda was the first. All, no, or did Steve go first? I'm sorry. Linda, okay, I'm sorry. All in favor, so you'll show, with a show of hands, because there are two nominations. So you'll have a show of hands for who you're voting for. So all in favor of Linda Carter as president, please raise your hand. Betsy, you want to know?
I have three, I see three votes.
And all in favor of Steve Cop as president, please raise your hand.
I see four.
Okay. Then in favor of Steve Cop, the majority of votes, he is the president of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
So now you take over for vice president.
So.
You can either stay there or move.
I'll stay here for tonight.
Yeah.
Now that we've got that out of the way, do we have any nominations for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Susan Worley.
I'd like to nominate Linda Carter.
Any other nominations?
Do we want to do a show of hands again?
It's thirteen nominations.
Okay.
Do we have any more nominations? Okay, Betsy?
I do have to. Show of hands. Show of hands for the, for Ms. Worley, nominated by Dwayne Zirin. All in favor. I see four. And next would be for Mrs. Carter by Mrs. Weitzel. And I see three.
Ms. Worley, you have been selected vice president of the board. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And at this time, we need to seek nominations for the secretary.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Weitzel.
I'd like to nominate Greg Yuravich.
Any others?
Can I see a show of hands for Mrs. Weitzel? I see three. And for Mr. Yuravich? I see four.
Greg, you are the secretary. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
This is within your daughters' area. I'll just switch places.
Oh, sure.
Sure, that's easier.
It's the bachelor. No, she just gave you the bachelor. I'm just kidding.
Is it? It's fine.
All right. At this time, we need to, agenda item number seven point five, set time, place, and dates for regular board meetings for the two, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. I believe we have them on the, on the screen. So I got any questions?
Um, Mr. Lee, when is graduation this year? I know it's Saturday. Is it Tuesday, Saturday?
Any questions? Got a motion to approve?
So move.
Granted.
Second, Susan, thank you.
Yes, Zirin?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes. Okay, moving on to seven point six, we need to appoint committee representatives. We're gonna do them all. So we got CACC.
By policy, the president, by policy, the president appoints them, but I'm sure he would like for you to tell him who wants what.
Okay.
If anybody's interested.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So.
But you can go ahead and take action as a board.
Okay, so we've got representative for CACC.
CACC.
Currently, I have been that person. Anybody else has any interests? You're more than welcome to take over that. If not, I'll continue it. No problems?
None.
Well, help me, help me, what does that position do? It's for the Capital Area Career Center?
Yeah, it amounts to about three meetings a year. And then they have, they have a board that consists of superintendents that meet on a more regular basis.
And then you report back to us, I assume?
Yeah.
If you do.
Okay.
No interest?
I think you're doing a great job. If you need someone, I'd be willing to do it. You're taking on a huge task now as president, so if you need me, I can do that, if it's only three meetings a year.
What are you gonna do? I'll continue unless, I find it's a burden.
Okay.
That's all right.
That's fine.
All right.
Don't say I didn't offer.
I understand. I may call you out on it, too. Finance committee.
I'd like to volunteer for that.
Typically, we have two for these, for remainder of these.
Who's been doing those?
I believe Rick and Susan.
Well, I'm happy to volunteer for that. Although, if they're open meetings, so.
I'd also be interested in that, just to.
So we got three.
Well, why don't you?
So you can mull it over.
Why don't you look great and Susan, and I can just attend this?
Is that fine with you?
Yes.
I often attend those as well.
Okay. Greg and Susan, you guys all right with them, then?
Mm-hmm.
I'm good with them.
Okay. Um, we also have construction committee.
I'd actually be interested in that.
Uh, I believe Jim and I were on it. I'll continue. Unless somebody else has an interest.
I can't, those are usually during the day, aren't they?
They, yeah.
I'm happy to do it if you choose not to do it. Or just show up.
I'll, I'll continue as long as I can. Uh, so I guess Dwayne and myself. And then we got, what, policy?
Policy.
And Linda and I have been doing that.
Do you guys feel comfortable to continue to do that?
I, I, I.
Okay. What are we gonna do? What are we going to do, continue with the technology committee?
We'll wait until...
Or wait, see?
Josh gets, I mean, I guess it doesn't hurt to have two, I didn't put that on there, but I guess it doesn't hurt to appoint two people for when needed, that's a good idea.
I think, I think that's an important area that deserves a committee, board representation at the committee level.
Okay, and that currently, prior to night was Jim and Brandon.
And I'm willing to continue that one.
I'd be interested in that.
Greg, anybody else? So Greg and Brandon? Is there any other committees that we need to...right now?
I don't believe so. Sometimes we have a calendar committee, but typically, we only have one board member, but the calendar has been set for next year, so.
That's not an action item, so all we did was just fill...
We did list it as an action item in case you wanted to take action on it, but, you know, may as well take action on the entire slate all at once, perhaps.
Approve all these?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, do I have a, do I have a motion then to approve the appointees to the committees that we just discussed?
So we have CACC is Steve Cop, Finance Committee is Susan and Greg, Construction is Duane and Steve, Policy is Linda and Lisa, and Technology is Brandon and Greg.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Betsy?
Yes, Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Zirin?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Okay, 7.7, approve board policies and rules and regulations. They're found in the Student Handbook and the Proceeding Board of Education.
This is just kind of a routine procedure, to, just to give your affirmation of, since we have new board members, affirmation of the Student Handbook and policies that are in place currently. So this is kind of a typical procedure.
So, go ahead. I'm seconding your motion.
I move.
Please move, thank you. Brandon, second. Betsy?
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Zirin?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Okay, and 7.8, Communication, published board member email addresses and bios. If you have not done that, I think it's just a request that we could get them updated.
We're waiting on one.
Okay.
I wonder which one. It is.
I've completed the task.
He just don't want Betsy making up stuff, that's all.
Okay, who moved? I'm sorry.
Is it an action?
I think just so she has permission to do so is maybe why.
Absolutely, do we have a motion then?
I move.
Thanks, Duane, your second. Second, thanks, Brandon.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Zirin?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
At this time, we're going to move on to 8 dot consent agenda items. Does anybody have any problem with going ahead and approving them all that we need to pull in?
I'd like to pull 8 dot 8, Summer Construction Projects, please.
Okay, anybody else?
And is the, is the financial report the one that Nate normally does, or will he do one of those also?
He does have a financial section later.
Sometimes, sometimes he just incorporates some of his observations in a later financial report, it's really at his discretion what he would like to do.
I apologize, I've been in the field, so I didn't look at it.
Yeah, that's okay. He does have later, he has a levy presentation and a budget, preliminary budget update, so that is come up later in, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So you're good, you don't need to sign it?
I'm good.
So all we're pulling is 8 dot 8, so do I have a motion to approve 8 dot 1 to 8 dot 7?
I move.
Thanks, Brandon, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Susan. Betsy?
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Zirin?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
And then we got 8 dot 8, Summer Construction Projects.
I was, I have a couple thoughts that I'd like to express. Well, actually, Nate, would, did you want to make your presentation first, and then we can discuss it?
Do you want me to present this?
Well, Dave is absent, so I don't know how you'd like to proceed. Would you like...
I'm happy to answer any questions, anybody else?
Okay, okay. I did attend the Construction Committee meeting on the Thursday. The following Tuesday was the Tech Committee meeting, and although the initial list at the Construction Committee has been pared down somewhat, I have reservations about proceeding on as far as some of these projects are concerned. And the reason why is, first of all, we're just at the beginning of really building and shaping our technology infrastructure. We really don't know how much it is going to be. And secondly, although I made reference to it previously, I feel very strongly and concur with Jen that we need to make sure we have mobile devices for all the teachers, so that they can go home and learn at their own tempo and at their own speed and at their own location, rather than staying at school very late. So I guess some of these items that I have reviewed, both from a, at the Construction Committee meeting and for this meeting tonight, at this time, I cannot, I cannot support going forward.
Are you saying on none of the items?
Well, um...
Or do you have some that you're particularly concerned about?
Well, okay, so if you look, some of these items have, okay, we approved the generators generally, and if I'm not mistaken, then Nate, is it fair to say then, the generator for GHS has, the actual equipment has already been approved, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I think that was $40,000 for the equipment?
$4,000, so it's been approved and hasn't been purchased.
Yeah, and we've already approved the purchase of the equipment. And then, for the installation of the generator at GHS and GMS, the total installation and something else, it was B&amp;B, was 155, right? That's on the board agenda.
That's on the agenda later, Susan.
Okay, so for one thing, those numbers are wrong. It's not 106.5 and 164.5, the summer work, unless, are you rolling everything into that?
These were, yes, that was A&amp;E, and also included the original purchase price and the installation, so these were the estimates we went off originally, before we approved the bid for tonight, or actually put the other bid up for approval.
Okay, so those were actually committed prior?
The purchase of them was committed previously.
Right, because if we approved the equipment, then automatically, we're approving the installation, okay. Well, maybe this isn't, I'm not in the construction business, but if I remember correctly, Nate, the oven replacement at BES, we were going to hold off on.
Well, it says in the description.
Yeah, we get that in the description, Susan, so we will replace those as the need arises, as they fail, so that is correct. But we do have that in the actual description within the agenda.
Yeah, I think it's somewhat leading, putting that on the schedule without some sort of notation, but...
It's right here in the agenda.
Oh, okay. However, my understanding was from that, and I, Duane and Steve were there, was my understanding that it was just going to be pulled, because Dave said they are working.
With the, we agreed that if it failed, we would replace it.
Okay.
That's correct, and they are very close to failure, so we left them there as a reserve future reference. Correct.
My question about it, though, if the oven fails, and we don't have an oven, what does that do to our, feeding our kids?
Well, we expedite the purchase process. It would not need to be someone that's bid out for an emergency situation.
We wouldn't bid it out for an emergency situation?
That's correct.
So if we purchased it now, we would have the opportunity to bid it out? Am I correct?
We could certainly do that, yes.
And, and so if we bid it out, then consequently, we could get a cheaper price for it, and we would have a working oven, which is important to provide food for our cafeteria.
That is very possible, yes.
Nate, do we have the ability to purchase from state contracts to leverage our buying power?
We do.
So is that something we always consider as we do these purchases?
We do, yes.
Who, who made this list? Where did this list come from?
Mr. Murphy made this list. This came out of several committee meetings, really going back the last eight or nine months.
And who was in attendance at those committee meetings?
Committee members, including Mr. Cop.
Jim and I. Nate?
Sorry.
Nate was...
And myself, Dave Murphy.
So did any of these things come from the principals saying they needed these things?
Yes, these came from the principals through a list of priorities that Mr. Murphy coordinated with them, correct.
Okay, so let me get this straight, that this list came from, principals gave feedback to Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy presented it at a construction meeting, and feedback came from there?
That's correct.
So many hands have been on this. One of the things on here, sidewalks, wide concession sidewalks, concrete walk modifications, are those safety issues?
Yes, and these are items we will try and push through health life safety, we'll do amendment to there, they will accept it, and those items, again, are in consideration. We will try and push as many of these through health life safety as we can, typically.
Because if we're putting down concrete sidewalks, the best time, not the best time is when students are present.
That's correct, yes.
And security entrance, would you explain the security entrance?
Transportation.
That's the security entrance at Transportation. Currently, there's a, probably if I'm wrong, carry, there's a door coming into Transportation Office.
Correct.
We don't have any way to secure the Transportation Office. Several times a year, we'll get an irate parent who just, or storms in, and the last one, we, in fact, we had Randy Allen come over, it, it was quite, quite prevalent to sending this at a million of times, so one of the, one of the things we discussed was, we probably need a way to secure at least the door to the office. Might as well, we have to leave the office to the school.
And have we upgraded all the security entrances at our other facilities? So this is the only facility that doesn't have enough?
That's not correct.
No, that's not correct.
Tell me the correct answer.
We need to update it with a CES.
Right. That is on the list.
You have a CES.
And it's on this list?
Not for summer.
It is not on this list, no.
I guess that's where I'm at, is I was at this meeting, and it was just not knowing where we're at with technology, and it was a little vague to me on the, the order here, and I guess my comment was, could we force rank them? Say we only had $200,000, which three or four, I mean, if the building's going to burn down, we need to replace it, but if we're just looking for ways to make sure we spend the bond money, I'm not interested in that.
Part of, I'm sorry to cut you off...
Go ahead.
Yeah, part of the process that falls in place here is the principals do a ranking, and then Dave works with them on their rank in, he also provides administrative ranking as well, compares the two together. The other factor that comes into play with this particular instance is we are somewhat late in game, starting to prove in some of these summer projects, so there were certain projects we had to pull off the table, because they require a pretty intensive amount of A&amp;E to go into them, so there are ones we've got, lots have gotten in, but it's just far too late in game, so.
So this list has already been provided?
It has been provided several times, yes.
It has been several times?
Yes.
And this is condensed from a much longer list?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, there's another list that continues to go on into '16, '17, '18, and '19, and this was one that they condensed down into, just for summer projects for the, this upcoming summer. Nate, I do have a question on the electrical energy metering. It's shown at district-wide at 15,000. I looked through the other schedules, and if you had them district-wide up, we're just a little over $30,000, did they cut back on some of the buildings they were going to try to meter?
I know these got pricing on a couple of different products, I believe, and can't exactly comment on that without Mr. Murphy here.
Okay, I didn't know whether he was just going to try a few buildings and see how it works before we went, did it at every building?
I believe he wants to do all the buildings, but I might be mistaken, although I don't have my minutes with me here, my notes from the last meeting.
He's breaking them out, the two hundred.
And then, as, as board members, I, I think it's important to remember that we've got goals attached to every one of these agenda items, and we need to be focused on them at this level, and if you'll read the one from this agenda item, it's 2.4, "The District Will Build, Maintain Appropriate and Safe Facilities, Infrastructure, and Technology to Optimize Student Learning and Staff Effectiveness." I personally think there's some items on here that may not have anything to do with student learning and staff effectiveness, and I hope they are vetted out before they get to the board. For instance, concrete at the GMS concession stand out by the track, I don't know how that ties into student learning, but if we need some more rock, can we get some more rock for less than $40,000, or do we need concrete? I guess there's, we're, we're short on money, and we're cutting teachers, and I think we need to just try to show some restraint if we can, so.
Well, but this is different, okay, I guess there's two thoughts here, that, one, it's different monies, and two, this also says appropriate and safe facilities, and the last thing we need is somebody hurting themselves and suing us again. And, I mean, is this money that comes out of, that's going to, I mean, you've been in those meetings all these months, so my assumption would be that you would have expressed your opinions in those meetings about what should or should not be on here? So if they're on here today, that means, I guess I would have assumed that you would have known, you would have approved that?
This list has gotten shortened considerably from where it was before, so the committee did give their blessing to move forward on these, but as we move forward, there's going to be a lot more that we're going to be able to spend.
So it seems like we have been, the committee has been very prudent in taking a look at what our finances are and what we're able to do, and what, what we wanted to do and what we're able to do.
Correct.
Based on, on need. Is, is there a motion on the table about this?
No.
There is none.
There is not.
So what, one more, can we, knowing that the tech director's just started tonight, and we don't know what we're going to do there, can we delay this a month, and everybody look at it again, or?
Well, the...
I mean, you got it.
You can't pay for mobile devices out of this money, though.
Yeah, you don't want the IT item at the bottom, that's under IT discussion. That's an IT project.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this is presented.
I'd like to second that motion, and then it's open for discussion.
Correct, and then is this, is this the list that's actually going to be gone through this summer? That's correct, yes.
What percentage of our funds does this cover? How much, what is the percentage of our funds that will be spent if we use, if we use this?
Out of the, I mean, a reasonable conclusion would be, we plotted roughly 12 million total, so about 10%.
This is 10% of...
10% of the last round of bond issuance.
And that includes, use, that includes, as you recall, we determined to use, the past board determined to convert the premium into debt, correct? So we added, we, we got, we had a premium of about a million dollars, and it could have either, that premium could have been converted to debt, or we could have said no, we promised $35 million to the taxpayers, so...
$35 million, it's not include a premium or discount. So that's purely the nature of the market.
Correct, but we...
We could certainly get more than that based on the market for bonds and...
Correct, but do you recall that there was a premium of about a million dollars?
There was about a million, that's correct, on this last one.
And then, the board did vote to go ahead and use that premium... And then, the board did vote to go ahead and use that premium. Rather than leaving it on the table, they determined that we would just go ahead and use that premium and roll it in as part of the last issuance.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember that discussion. It was quite a lengthy discussion.
Correct.
And it was also that the, it would add just a year or two to the paying off the bonds?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, Linda.
As I recall, it was just a few years, and then the money would be able to be spent for things that we need to maintain and improve our facilities.
I don't know often if that would extend the actual payment schedule, but it would certainly increase the amount of repayment.
And it would not increase the tax rate?
No, we kept the tax rate at the same, 7.70.
Right, tax rate stayed the same. But it's a greater opportunity to spend money where we need to fix our, improve our facilities.
And in a worse bond environment, we could easily be on a one-way route discount, depending on the nature of interest rates. So it could go either way.
So our promise to, I'm sorry, our promise to the taxpayers of keeping the rate consistent was held. And as I recall, we just started, we are extending it.
The long-term projections seem to indicate will be around 77, correct?
Yes. So we are being honest with our taxpayers.
And to answer Linda's question, what were you asking there? But there's a 10 million what now that it's 10% of?
This, the cost of this, of doing the things.
Is 10% of what now?
Last bond issuance, which was roughly 12 million total with the premium.
What, is the high school addition coming out of that?
It is, yes.
So how much do we have left, maybe is another way of asking your question? After the high school addition?
That would be a clarifying question.
Plus tech.
Well, tech is on here. So if we approve this, we vote.
No.
$150,000.
No, no, that's not real tech.
Let me clarify the tech, just so that you understand.
Right, that's the health, life, safety.
This is just the health, life, safety violations, the cabling that we need to address. This does not include the infrastructure that we've talked about in the past. This is purely from the health, life, safety walkthrough.
I remember you saying that.
So I want to make sure that you can keep those stuff.
I think he also included, isn't it, it's the air conditioning for those server rooms.
Correct.
That was part of the discussion.
And of course, but it's, as a result of the health, life, safety, it is not what we talked about.
Right.
So I want to make sure you keep that in mind.
Yes, thanks, Linda.
And it's not mobile devices, and we can't, we can't pay for mobile devices out of this fund.
Okay. So out of that 12 million, if you deduct the high school addition?
For teachers, out of bonds.
What would be left?
Not these bonds.
Is that what you're asking, kind of?
Yes, yes.
Current projections before any more technology purchases will be around $5 million.
$5 million?
Of $35 million.
$10,000.
But that would cover this, the bothersome part to me is when I looked back at that other sheet you're talking about, we got in 20, bear with me, 2019, we got $2 million for GHS roof replacement, and we've got $1,003,000 for GMS bus lane. Nope, sorry, that's on this list, I think. But we've also got $1,003,000 in 2019 for BESHVAC. So there's 3.3 of that 5. I'm just concerned, as an economist, I guess, what, if we, if you run out of money, that's when Murphy's Law takes effect. And I'd hate to see the same thing happen with this bond situation in our buildings that just happened with our teachers last week, where we're out of money and we have no options. That's my angle on it.
It's a totally different situation, though.
It's a different pot of money, is what you're saying.
It's a different situation. We specifically went to the voters and asked to spend this money for these improvements. And when the money's gone, that's correct, but there will always be other things that are going to need to be fixed as time goes on. It's just the nature of running a very large district business. And what's in the ed fund, those monies, we do not go to referendum for those, those are from the tax levy. So when you, you know...
So it's a different pot of money, you're saying?
Well, it's a different pot of money, and it's a different...
Different source.
A different source, a different way of it being funded, which I think you just have to, you know, we have to understand that there's different ways to fund those pots of money, and they are different pots of money.
So what we're debating is what to spend it on, aren't we?
Well, and Dwayne, I think along the same lines that you were saying, is if these are things that need to be done, as well as the things that you mentioned, that now is the time to do them. Because if we don't have that money, we're not going to be able to do them.
And that's what I was unclear on at the meeting, is, you know, like, my refrigerator could quit tomorrow, but I don't go buy a new one now, because then it never ends.
Well, if you're feeding 900 kids...
But you hate to be in an emergency, I get it.
Yeah.
So what, I get, that was my original point. I'm a little vague on what the priority is if I had to do, say, a third of them. I just don't know, you know? I'm uncomfortable.
It's my professional recommendation that we have to maintain our facilities, and these infrastructure, from as many of which are infrastructure-related, have to be, have to be done now pretty quickly, otherwise it's going to be a lot more expensive in two or three years, if not longer.
And that was my concern coming out of the committee meeting, was that if they need to be fixed, let's get them fixed. If we're just wanting to add stuff to our list, and while we're spending money, we need to be restraining ourselves on that.
Sounds like we've subtracted a lot from the list.
So you think the future value of money's going to be more expensive if we don't move on these projects?
Absolutely, yes.
Any more discussion?
I have just one observation, and I know I actually might make it difficult for you, Nate, but that list extends out to '16, '17, '18, and '19. In essence, when you look at this list versus what's on the list in the future, in essence, you're saying, for example, that spending $80,000 on clock replacements at GHS is more important than every other item listed on those buildings, protect, building projects projected out. And then I guess my second observation is, Dave Murphy is absent for an undetermined length of time.
He's had surgery.
I understand. So my question at hand is, you know, this takes, if we're going to, if these projects are going to be started in the summer of 2015, this is a lot of work. And just by the fact that we don't know Dave Murphy's work schedule, it may be prudent to give him a chance to come back and maybe readjust the timeline.
I sat down with Dave before the construction committee meetings. Excuse me. And he assures me all of this will be done in the summer.
Typically, how he puts together a list is determining what can be done over a summer period, you know, how much work they can take on between the architects and the engineers and the district staff. And then also looks at, obviously, I think, Nate, am I wrong, that you, that part of his consideration was that the savings that he had from being under estimates for a lot of the projects thus far, is that part of what he was looking at this?
I think that's a huge part of it, yes. And frankly, when he came to me with this list, I thought it was rather short myself based on what our needs were. But this is a prioritized list that we believe we can fit in the summer, we'll fit in the summer, get these projects done for the benefit of the schools and students.
And I also believe that the architect had a priority list, and he got all his covered.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
That he felt?
It was part of the process. I don't know if he had them all covered, but they're definitely part of the process, yes.
Right. Any other comments, questions?
You'd like us to approve the schedule in its entirety, then, I would presume?
That's the motion, I believe.
Okay.
Is it, is it an option to, oh, I can't do it now, probably. Is it an option to move to table it for a month or something?
Take action on the motion that's on the table.
Yeah, you have to take action.
Can I clarify? Are you, are you motioning as recommended?
Yes.
Okay. Because as recommended, it excludes the, so it's not the list in its entirety?
It does exclude the others currently, yes.
And several of these we've already approved in previous meetings. Oh, I have a funny...
Yes, yeah.
The sink, when there's some sinks on here? Freezers?
Which means even by tabling it, a lot of, some of this has been done, so it wouldn't be...
That bottom line, yes.
I don't think the total's right. I mean, we know that, I don't, I don't, I don't think the numbers are right, but...
The numbers for each item on here are not right? Is that what you're saying?
Well...
And these are estimated?
Right.
Correct, yes.
All right, I have one more question, Steve. So say we have $5 million left, and there's $1,002,000 here. And on this old list, there's another 3.3, and there's some other stuff in between, but they're smaller. So that's 4.5. I'm concerned what we're going to use to fix our technology, because that's the hot topic right now around tech.
In my, we will use health, life, safety funds where applicable where we can. So that'll come into play, we do have over $1 million in health, life, safety.
On this list? On this list that is...
In our health, life, safety fund right now, for these projects.
And if we ran out of money, what would we do? Would we ask for a tax increase, or where would we get, if we had an issue after we spent this $5 million?
In absence of bond money, we would go to Fund 20, our operations maintenance fund. I mean, the money we take out of there that we didn't budget for would affect the education fund, most likely.
Okay, I'm good. So you're comfortable with this list, then, Nate?
Yes.
And it's your recommendation?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
No.
Weitzel, yes. Worley, no. Yuravich.
No.
Carter, yes. Cobb.
I have to say yes, because I gave it my blessing coming out of committee, so. Okay. We're on to nine personnel consent items. 9-1 through 9-16. Does anybody wish to pull any of that?
Yes, I would like to pull 9.15, please.
15, the employment of full-time director of technology?
Correct.
Anybody else? Now, in that case, do I have a motion to approve 9-1 to 9-14 and 9-16?
I'll make that motion.
That's second. Thank you, Nancy.
Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel, yes. Worley, yes. Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter, yes. Maddox?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. And we got 9-15, employment of a full-time director of technology.
Thank you. Teresa, will you please take a moment and introduce Josh to us, and then we can all welcome him most enthusiastically?
I would love to. So we concluded our search for the IT director a few weeks ago. We had a couple of board members, a few directors, our superintendent, and we had Sentinel Technologies helping us with that search. We, our top candidates, we put them through a technology screening with Sentinel Technologies to assess their technical abilities. From that, we narrowed down the pool and brought our top, or even further top candidates to the district to assess their fit with our team. So Josh impressed us from the first time we met him at Sentinel Technologies. He has an excellent standing, a technical background, in addition to just being an overall great fit for our district. He has earned his bachelor's and master's degree from the University of Illinois at Springfield in computer science. He has served as Rochester's senior network systems engineer for the past nine years. There, he has done a little bit of everything. He has supervised and maintained the district's network. He's provided a system with curriculum and planning and articulation of the technology committee. He's provided technical support to the buildings. He's worked with contacted vendors, assisted in preparation of technology budget, and he helped implement Rochester's one-to-one technology conversion. So in addition to that, Josh also serves as an adjunct technology instructor at Lincoln Lane Community College. So we are working right now with Rochester to help the transition be smooth for both districts. We have a good relationship with Rochester. While we worked, sorry that we stole him away, we are worried about their stability. We want to make sure that we have a smooth transition for both districts. So he'll be doing some part-time work for a few weeks this week and at the end of May. And we're just so excited that he's here, and I know he's ready to get started, so. Please join me in welcoming him. Thank you. Jen will never be replaced as technology director, but I know she's excited to give the reins, so.
Yes, thank you very much.
I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity, and I'm extremely excited to come on board, so I just want to thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Josh. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And we're going to let Josh slip out for the... Yeah.
All right. With that said, shall we, go ahead and make sure we get the approval?
Yes, yes.
So moved.
All right, 9-15, I have a motion, or a second?
Second.
For you, Bob?
Second, I'll second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All right, Nancy, please.
Weitzel, yes. Worley, yes. Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter, yes. Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yep.
Cobb?
Yes. Josh, thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome, Josh, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to new business, 10.1. We are going to talk about our superintendent's search, and I believe Mr. Robertson is here.
When we hire a superintendent, there will be again. Oh, okay, okay. Is it okay if I stand over here? Sure. Well, the camera is... There's nothing on the screen, so I guess I can stand over here. I believe there are three things that we need to, that I need to have some input from you, so that we can be able to bring some candidates to you on May 11th, is the night that we are, we'll be in a special session to present our slate of candidates and to do our interviewing workshop. The first decision that we need to talk about is how we're going to structure community and staff input in interviewing. And what I've given you tonight is what we typically do with districts when we do the slate of candidates with the first-round interviews and then the final-round interviews. So I want to just kind of go through that with you very briefly and see if this is a format that will work for you. And if it doesn't, then you need to let me know how you want to change it so that we can get candidates scheduled in the proper time slots. So the first sheet that I have given you is a sample of how we would schedule in candidates for the first-round interviews. You have already scheduled that you would do those first-round interviews on Friday, May 15, and Saturday, May 16. If we were to bring you six candidates, we would recommend typically that the district would start at about 5 o'clock on Friday night, do an hour interview, have 15 minutes before the next one, do an hour interview, have 15 minutes, do an hour interview, and be done with three at the 6th that night. Go home, come back the next morning, start about 8:30, do the same thing with the next three. If you follow that timeframe, then you're done around noon. That day, you're going to have to stay and have your discussion to narrow down to your three finalists, because your first interview with your first finalist is the following Tuesday. So either you're going to have to come back to us, another special meeting on Monday, and that doesn't give the candidates enough time to plan. So you really have to decide it that Saturday. Are there any questions about that schedule? I'm not saying agree with it, but do you have any questions on how that would work? Okay, so then let's look at the second sheet that I gave you. This is typically what we do with your finalists. And this is when we recommend that you involve engagement with your community and your stakeholders and your staff members.[1741.51] This is for one person. This whole schedule is one person. And then you duplicate this three days in a row. So to start with, we recommend that the person meet with their administrators, that their potential, their new administrators, if they were to come on. That's your administrators. So they meet with an administrative committee for an hour and a half. The reason we have that scheduled for an hour and a half is because those are going to be the direct reports. There's going to be a lot of checking each other out. Then we recommend that there be a little bit of a break and you have a community, community committee interview for an hour. Then have a little bit of a break and a teacher-staff committee interview for about an hour. Then give the candidate a dinner break, a rest, because they've just interviewed three times. Gather themselves, come back to the board at 7:00 PM and give their 15-minute presentation. And then approximately 7:20, the board goes through a second interview with the candidate. In the meantime, we're asking the administrative committee, the community committee, and the teacher-staff committee to give written feedback in the form of strengths and weaknesses of each candidate. And we would ask probably Betsy to gather those, shoot them up in an email document to all of you guys so that you can be seeing those through the day as these candidates are going through interviews and you're receiving input. So you have the input from all of these three committees before you meet with the candidate for the last time. Okay? Then you repeat this process the next day for the next candidate and then the next day for the third candidate. And then you have a date set, I believe, May 26th, which was right after Memorial Day. I think you scheduled that you would decide who your finalists would be that night, if I've got my date right. If you would involve the staff and the stakeholder committees at the first step, which is what you've still got on the table, that's that first schedule. I don't know how to make the, I don't know how to make the schedule. If you're going to involve all those stakeholders, you're going to have to do the entire day on Friday, the entire day on Saturday, and you're not going to have time to really sit and discuss and finalize your three candidates to come back on Tuesday. That's why we recommend that the board does the interviewing and narrows down to the three finalists. The board, when they narrow to the three finalists, are saying, any of these three are going to be good for us, we've just got to decide which one's the one. And at that point, get your feedback from your community members and your staff members. If there is a clear candidate or two that just aren't going to make a good match, I don't want to say this word, but I'm going to say it, there's no need to waste everybody's time, all these people, in doing that narrowing, because really it's the board's job to do that. So I guess the first decision I need is, is this a process that you can live with? Or do you want to change it and somehow involve stakeholder and staff at the first round?
Can I ask you a clarifying question before we, is that you had said that during the, during these interviews, the administrative committee, community committee, and teacher and staff committee, are you going to be here those days while those people are being interviewed? When are they going to be completing these feedback forms?
Immediately after they interview the candidate, the administrative, the administrative committee meets with them first. As soon as they're done meeting that candidate at 2:30, they're going to sit before they take off, they're going to sit there, they're going to fill out that feedback form, put them all in an envelope, give them to Betsy.
Okay, my worry is overloading Betsy that day, but essentially, is she going to just scan these into a PDF and email them to us? And how much time is that going to take out of you to be doing that all day and then?
It shouldn't be a problem. It really shouldn't. I mean, if I gather them all and just scan them in PDF, it's just a matter of minutes, really. It'll be okay.
All right, thank you.
It doesn't take that long. The alternative is for you to get handed the whole stack when you come in that night. And then you don't have time to go, really go through them and see what everybody has to say.
So I have one question. Is the composition of the administrative, community, and teacher-staff committee, when we get to the final three, is it, is it the same people who were initially chosen? Or are, will the composition of those committees be slightly changed or what?
It can be either or. I think Betsy's started to work on that or has been working on that. I have a number of people who've expressed interest. So I can honestly see it being different because I have so many who are great representatives of all of our constituents. So honestly, you know, I've had at least 20 people approach me and tell me they want to be on it.
Okay.
From the community and not the staff. I mean, Bob can maybe answer that a little bit better, but. So I can honestly see two separate, different committees altogether, perhaps one or two, maybe five individuals serving on both.
Okay, that sounds, I mean.
It's really however you want to set that up or whoever you want to invite.
It sounds like the desire is there, so I'm in favor of changing the composition as you think necessary, Betsy.
There's just a lot of interest. And I'd like to be able to hear their points of view.
That's good.
And you're going to pick them?
Actually, what I do is, is I go to the leadership of a lot of these organizations, such as the boosters or, you know, the Kiwanis or whatever. I ask them to pick the person that they would choose. That's a good way to do it. I don't want to be responsible. That keeps you and the board from hand-kicking. People if they pick their own.
And then, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but then as far as the administrators, I mean, are all the administrators then or all the district offices?
It can't be because you're not going to have all of your building principals in your district office in one place at one time. So it's going to have to be.
Not even all of the direct reports? So not even the door, all of the direct reports wouldn't be like, so Teresa Cheney wouldn't be?
You would have as many as you can, but I don't think you want to take all of your administrators from the district and put them in one room during the school day. What you, what you can do though, is you can put a couple of those administrators, you know, keep one in each building at least to make sure that in case there's an emergency, somebody's there. And then stick them, not stick them, but add them to one of the other committees so that they at least have an opportunity to interpret. That's typically what other districts will do.
What's your recommendation for size of committees so that candidates aren't overwhelmed?
Twelve and fifteen, no more than twelve and fifteen.
Oh, that's. So I, I agree with Lisa that in some way, we have to make sure that the administrative team in its entirety, whether they're part of the administrative committee or, I don't know, I mean, part of the, part of any other structure, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they could join the board or whatever. I don't, you know, I don't know. But it's very difficult to say that three principals can go to, you know, this meeting, but three cannot. I mean.
Well, and like I said, other districts typically will send as many as they can to the administrative committee.
Okay.
Designate one. And they'll send those who didn't get to attend to one of the others.
Okay, perfect.
The alternative to that would be having the entire administrative committee meet sometime after the school day. Do that, you could, but I was, I was trying to get, we always try to get the teachers after the school day.
Right.
But much like you have.
We wouldn't have to give them, I guess, as long of a dinner break, but it's kind of a time for the candidates to regroup before they meet with the board again.
And we do have assistants in each, assistant principals in each of the buildings. So theoretically, they could put all of the principals and the office, you know, the office together in that pool.
Right. Right. And still be below the recommended twelve to fifteen.
And everybody gets a shot.
We, we basically listened to everything you've said so far. My, my only thought was if Betsy says there's that much interest, do we bring them in for the six just because they're that interested? How do you decide something like this?
Well, everybody can't pick the superintendent. I mean, you are seven people who represent how many people out there? Everybody doesn't get a chance to make all the decisions the board makes. So you just have to go with a representative sampling of people. You have people who are interested. Go with those people and, you know, some people got to be in focus groups, other people didn't get to be in focus groups, you know. Maybe we could compromise and just have a larger committee. You can't. Once, like maybe 20. Because really. I would, I would go more than 20, but 20 would be okay. Maybe rather than have, have it separated, then we could just have a larger committee. Right. You have to remember, the candidate is going to be exhausted when they're talking and meeting with people from one to, every time you let them out of here, I hope that you can keep them forever, but. You know, that's a long day for them. They'll be on their toes, they're asking questions, you know, answering questions. You don't want to wear them out before they get to you.
And if we have 20 people on a committee, they're not all going to be able to ask questions.
No.
It's just not going to be possible.
Right.
But we'll at least get them in front of them so they can see how they act.
Right, right.
And get the feel for what they see in them, correct?
And they'll fill out the feedback form.
And they'll all be, and the reason we have them fill out the feedback form rather than have a spokesperson from the group report board is one spokesperson will be inadvertently interjecting their own opinion in the report. And it may not necessarily reflect the opinion and the thoughts of everybody else. So get everybody the opportunity to say what they want to say.
Are the questions structured?
The questions will be structured. I will go through an interviewing workshop, question workshop with you guys when I present the slate. I would also like to go through that, that same technique with the community and staff committee that, probably that afternoon before I meet with you guys when I present the slate, just to go through the same protocol. And give them a chance to develop their questions, let them understand you can't ask, if you have 20 people and you have an hour, you can't all ask, you can't all ask you questions because your only answers can be one word answers. You don't want to have to expand or anything, you know. There has to be a process. The questions need to kind of flow. We talk about all that. We give you sample questions, just gops of sample questions. You can either use verbatim or you can use them to develop your own, put some together. We asked you to take a look at the profile because that's what your community and stakeholders said they're looking for. So you probably ought to ask some questions geared toward that profile.
I think Twain and Greg will need a copy of that because I don't, I must.
Uh, I think Betsy gave it to them.
We have that.
Betsy gave it. So there, there's just a lot that goes into that. And the reason we have that in closed session is because we're talking about the questions that you're going to be asking candidates. And with those questions out ahead of time, we don't have candidates to prepare answers.
So the other thing that we didn't really talk about here is there was some community, there's significant community interest in being involved in the first round of interviews. And I know that that is not your recommendation, but I also know that it needs to be board discussion about how. And I understand that there'd be conflict with what your, the schedule you proposed. But I think it's important to hear from the board about, you know, we did have some folks who almost felt that if they weren't included in this first round of interviews of their opinion, then why were they included in those me, early meetings? So.
And, and that was the whole reason I started off with, here's what we typically do. Next, I was going to say, I need to hear from the board now, do you want to follow what we typically do? Or do you want to involve stakeholders in the first round? And if you do want to involve them in the first round, then I can really figure out how to do the schedule. Because you've got six people and you've got a lot of people involved. And this, and this is what it looks like when you involve a lot of people. It's an, it's an all-day event. We don't have six days in, or three full days worked in to do six candidates with this type of structure.
In your experience, do the good candidates jump out during this process?
Let's don't say good candidates, okay? They're all, they're all going to be good candidates.
Appropriate for our district.
The, the best matches for your district. Because somebody you may think, oh, I don't even know why she got that person, might be the top candidate in another district because it's a better match. So every candidate that we bring you can do the job here, can do the job at Chatham, can work with all of you guys. It's just a matter of personality, feel, chemistry, you like their answers, you don't like their answers, you know? And they're checking you out too. They might meet you guys and say, hmm, I don't know if I like them or not, you know, or if I can work with them. They might not have a good chemistry. Or they might have a good chemistry with you and are begging for the job and you're thinking, hmm, I don't think so. You know, it's, it's got to be a two-way street. It's really embarrassing, it really is. They're checking you out just like you're checking them out.
How is the pool that you've had?
The pool is a good pool. We have 41 applications. I was surprised we had 41 applications this late in the year. It is late. Jim was correct, it is late. We interviewed 15 candidates over the weekend and we are narrowing down the slate right now. We're going over our notes and making some reference calls. By the end of the weekend, we'll have that slate narrowed down.
But you feel good about the candidates?
I feel good about the, the pool. I will tell you that we, there are a couple of good candidates that did not apply because of the timing that, that may have made it on your slate. But there are a lot of candidates who did apply that will probably make it on your slate that said, only because it's Chatham and I put my name in the hat. If it wasn't Chatham, I would probably say it's too late in the year and do that to my board. So pleased about that.
Would you, for the sake of our new board members, tell us how you vet the candidates to make sure that they are upstanding superintendent candidates? I don't know how to say that any other way.
How many superintendents are there on this date? Like 800? I probably know like 790. Not, not too far off. I know a lot of them or from most of them, but we, we do a thorough Google search. Anybody can do a Google search. We contact references that they give us. We contact people that we know would know them that they don't give us. We contact their neighboring districts, people in their neighboring districts, looking to see if there's anything, any reason why we shouldn't bring them. After you leave them, we ask them to give you a list of 14 references that you can call. Board members will split those up and you'll all do your own checking. You'll all do your own Googling. We have a company that we recommend that you hire that does a thorough background investigation. They can get into records and, you know, court records and DMV records and financial records, those kinds of things that we can't get into. We ask the candidates in our interviews, is there anything that's in your background that would be an embarrassment to you, to us as a firm or to the district of Chatham if we were to bring you forward and if we were to be found out? And they may have something, I mean, one gentleman said, well, I got a speeding ticket. And I said, well, we don't care about speeding tickets. Where you're selling cocaine on the corner or something like that, you know, something, something that would be bad. We give them an opportunity to be honest with us. If they say no, there's nothing there and we discover something, that's grounds for being off the slate or grounds for being fired, you know, if they lie about that.
So, so the company that you recommend that we use to do the background, the more thorough background, would that be on the sixth that come or on the final three or the final one?
The final one, the final one. Just, just to do that last piece of due diligence, this is a high-profile job. It's an important job and we recommend that you take that step just to check and make sure there's no skeleton in the file. Okay, so, so the first item, I guess, that I'm needing to know is at what point are you going to involve other people interviewing? Still going to stand by my recommendation, do it at the final three level?
I'm completely comfortable with what you're saying.
That's fine too. Just given the time constraints, it's hard to change the schedule.
Yeah, I've been in situations where I've interviewed six candidates for one position. And I tell you, that is an awful lot of information to process and keep in the correct box in your head even when you take the notes. You know, by the time you finish with the sixth, it's like, what did that first one say? So I think sometimes it's a detriment to have two.
Well, the good thing is that group got to help us choose you.
Right.
And if I remember right, it was basically unanimous. So that's, that's comforting.
And I know there was one individual that in particular was really wanting to be involved at the sixth stage. And I, I did have a conversation with that person during the focus group thing. And one, one concern that that person had was that the board, the board's ability to pick the right three as the finalists because they didn't want the board to pick somebody who absolutely couldn't do the job. And I reassured that person that we're not going to bring you anybody that can't do the job. We're going to bring you six qualified people that any of them could do the job. It's just finding the right match, basically.
Were they comfortable with that?
Seemed to be. At that time. Now, that's been a month ago, they may have changed their minds since then, but they were at that time, yes.
There still are some folks who are not, who do feel that they were asked to participate and felt that they should be able to participate in even the first round of interviews. And I'm trying to see, you know, I could go through what the majority of the board says, but my assumption is perhaps one of the, one of those individuals may be the same individual with whom you spoke.
So do we need, do you need a motion for this? So are we in agreement?
So are we in agreement?
I don't need a motion.
You just need to get approval. Are we comfortable with Diane's recommendation to not bring in committees, groups from outside the board until we get down to the final three?
Well, Lisa, are you recommending just one person? Or are you recommending, are you recommending that just one person be added? Are you concerned that a couple of community members should be added?
I just thought that the board needed to discuss it, that there were a few community members who, I mean, there were two more community members who now sit on the board, who felt very strongly at that time that community members should be part of the first round of interviews. So, you know, if we chose to add a community member, two community members to those first rounds, my only question would be, of course, is where do you draw the line? And, you know, why would you choose a community member over an administrator? And so, I mean, there is some, but it just, it needs to, you know, it just, the board needs to know that there are community members who expect to be part of the first round.
And I will go back to, you are the board, and it's your job to pick the superintendent. And you are under no obligation whatsoever to involve anybody at any stage of the meeting. We recommend that you do at the final stage because that does involve your community, your stakeholders. We highly recommend that. But there's no obligation for you to involve community members at the first stage.
And I recognize that.
Well, what's your preference, Lisa? Do you have a preference?
The majority of the board is going to make the recommendation that.
We've got to remember if we open that up, where do we draw the line? Because ultimately, there'll be somebody saying, well, I want to be part of that, too. So how do we, where do we figure out who then what people are?
Do we do take a vote or something?
I just.
Are we comfortable with Diane's recommendation?
I'm going forward with this type of the schedule, okay? All right. Comp for salary, I do a salary and compensation comparison study for you so that you can have some idea what the going rate is for a salary and benefits for your contract from any superintendent. I need to know who you want me to compare you to, who you want me to do that comparison for. There are multiple ways, and you don't have to name off districts tonight, but there are multiple ways we can do that. You can say do Luda School Districts, you can say do school districts in the Sangamon County area, you can say do a Lincoln Division School Districts, you can say do school districts that have a population of 2,000 to 5,000 students.
Well, I would think you'd have to, you can't, I don't think you can limit it to Sangamon County. I think you'd have to do a Luda District who has comparable EAVs with enrollment figures. You know, districts that are comparable that are statewide.
That might be two or three districts.
And south of I-80. It has to be south of I-80.
Okay, because a part of my study is, I do the EAV comps, I do the expenditure per student comps, I do the local tax, the local revenue versus state revenue, you know, percent funding, so that you can see, you know, those are comparable, you can see, well, the reason that they can, they're paying their superintendent so much more is because they have all this CPPR, T-money, and that's why they can do that, even though they only have 1,000 students or something like that. You can see all that.
So you do that with the comps that we suggest? Or do you have comps that, no, we suggest the comps to you that we want to use?
The districts, yes. So, like I said, I don't need to have specific names, but what parameters do you want me to use to find comparables?
And you need that tonight?
Well, I don't have to tell it tonight, but I'd like to have, time's marching on here.
I know you don't have to, I know you don't, we don't necessarily have to give you detail names, but I'll tell you what I did. I looked at Edwardsville, Bloomington, Dunlap, and Champaign. And the reason why I, the things, I took the ISBE report cards, I looked at population count, I looked at ACT scores, I looked at south, I looked at location, south of I-80. And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, I looked at all the Luda schools, and some of them are just not appropriate.
Right.
But all the ones I chose are Luda schools. I mean, maybe other people have ideas, but I just looked at some key things as I was, some of these factors.
If you want me to, I can shoot out to Betsy an email with some of the comps that we did, like with Dunlap. Because they're very comparable.
Right.
They chose certain districts.
Right.
That would be helpful.
If you want me to do that, I can add and then see if there's any others that you would like to add to that, because we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, would you look at Edwardsville, too, please?
So did you help, sorry, go ahead and make your notes.
Okay, I can write and listen.
Did you help Dunlap, or do you have any advice?
Yeah, we did.
We're just supposed to, I'd be interested in what you have to say.
About what?
Like, what's your advice? Who should we compare to?
I would compare, they wanted comparison of central Illinois school districts that were like-sized enrollment. But then they also wanted everybody that was in like their immediate junior county vicinity. So I was also doing small elementary-only districts. And so when I did that, I sorted out, like, these are the ones that are in your size and unit districts like you are, and then here are the other ones. I did like two different spreadsheets.
And as a former administrator, does that sound good?
Yes. Because if we just look at all of Sangamon County, there are a lot of schools in Sangamon County who are not.
That includes Frigill.
Yes. And they wouldn't be appropriate for us. And some of the Luda schools are very, very large and would not.
They're a small district.
I think one of the key criterias is enrollment, so that we can at least match the size of the district. And that's what the superintendent is going to.
K-12s. Correct. Unit districts. Okay. I will then shoot Betsy an email with districts that look like the ones that would be good ones, and then if there's somebody else that you want me to add, just let me know.
May I ask you a question? In your business, for example, okay, a couple of these districts that I studied, is it, for example, we're at about 4,500. And I figured like Bloomington was at 5,300, so that's okay. Now, what about, is our districts that are at about 7,000 enrollment, could that be considered within our enrollment frame? I mean, it doesn't.
I would probably go somewhere like 2,500 up to about 7,500.
Okay.
Kind of like in that range.
Okay.
About midline in there.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. Okay, back out Champaign then.
Okay, so we're good on comps?
Okay, we're good on comps. And then my new VOE contact person.
Imagine that would be Steve.
Steve?
Guess that's me.
I won't call you very often, I promise.
He doesn't have anything else on.
I just need to know who to reach out to if I need to, if I have a question. All right, that's all I need to know. If you have any other questions, we'll move on here.
Are we good with Diane?
Thank you.
I will see you on May 11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 10-2, summer school schedule.
I'm Christine. I'm Christine Lena. I haven't met everybody yet. We are recommending a similar format to what we've done in the past. Noticeable difference is that first semester will be, I'm sorry, first session, semester one, will cover both GMS and GHS offerings, and they will be at GMS due to construction at the high school. The second semester or second session will only include the high school, and that will be back at the high school for the second session at that time. At this time, looking at preliminary numbers, we're for sure going to be offering English and algebra, consumer ed, driver set, and government, and then also the seventh and eighth grade at that time. All of this is, depends on enrollment numbers as to what classes will go. And if they don't have enough enrollment, then obviously we would not have those classes We have at the bottom included the handbooks have just been modified some years before. No noticeable changes on the handbooks. And then there's the teacher request, which is very similar to last year as well.
So as far as, excuse me, but as far as the enrollment count as to what's going to be offered and what's not going to be offered, you're going to run the numbers past Nate to make sure that, because our goal as a board for this upcoming summer school is that it had, the summer school courses offered have to be at net zero cost. I mean, this isn't.
It wasn't a board discussion.
Wasn't it part of collective bargaining discussions? Were you at all the meetings?
You can't discuss.
Okay, well, in any event, I guess what we should do then is, I would be willing to approve this, given, with a caveat that until the board agrees otherwise, or disagrees otherwise, that we offer summer school where it's net zero.
So you're asking us to count enrollment, is what you're saying?
Well, all I'm saying is, if, I'm saying is the number of students at $150 per student tuition, whatever number it takes to pay for that teacher's salary for that class, that's the required number of students it will take in order to offer that course. That's what I'm saying.
If you get 15 kids, you'd be able to take that.
And another way to look at it, too, would be, take a look at the whole cost of summer school. Because you could have 15 in one class, and you could have 12 in another, but it evens out.
For the seventh and eighth grade, the students do not pay because it's the way that we provide an additional intervention so that they can pass. It's remedial. So we have approximately 15 students in the seventh grade, 15 in the eighth grade. That's 30 kids that would be up for retention. And it's part, it's in the board policy.
Right, right, okay, thanks.
So it may not be reasonable that net zero, but we get close, don't we?
At the high school for those courses.
And more than what is needed.
I'll move as presented.
A second.
Any further discussion on this? Any questions?
I was just curious, ma'am, if, is this a state mandate? And do they give us money to do it? Or just some detail?
It's not a state mandate. It's something that we've always offered in our district to help remedial students and to help students that, you know, sometimes students struggle getting something in their day, so we've offered those. It's been quite some time now that we've been, since I've been here, anyway. And so it's not required, and it's not covered, and so.
The algebra and the Englishers are only for students who have failed classes. It is not for advancement.
If we did not offer that, would there be opportunities for those students to go other places and take the same courses?
There are some classes that the students can pay for as spring film.
And that's pretty much a computer-based program?
It's not teacher-interacted.
And it's not our staff, too. I mean, that's the other big thing that.
So it's a better problem.
Right. We did increase the fee, yeah.
Does this include any extended-year services for our specialized students?
No, those are required.
They're what?
Those are required. The ESY is required. So no, this is, this is not the ESY, separate.
But we do have to provide summer school for some students.
Yes.
Legally. So that kind of goes to your question, Grace. There are some that we are legally required to provide.
Has it been working?
Has it been working?
Yeah.
Well, we have students that aren't retained, so I would say that's the goal.
There you go.
It's in our seventh and eighth grade to help those students pass because, you know, we can't socially promote students. At the high school, it does allow students to stay on track and graduate with their classes.
So is it an intervention strategy that has been successful in the district?
I would say yes.
Any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second. Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley. Yes, Yorayvich.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Maddox.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Thank you, Christine.
Yes, thank you. 10-3, generator installation project. Is that's your name?
So what we have before you is a recommendation to approve the bids for the generator installations at both the high school and GMS and GES. We had two bids on a project, B&amp;B Electric bid 104,800, and Prairie State, Columbia heating bid 156,040, meaning B&amp;B Electric was the lowest responsible bidder. The architectural estimate for the project was at $195,000. So for net savings there, off our original estimate, roughly $40,000. You'll recall, I believe two months ago, we approved the purchase of the generators, this assembly and installation there.
Is this installation and materials?
Yes.
Okay, so this will complete the generator projects?
That's correct.
What did it work to take the high bid for the one school, or the low bid for the one school, the low bid for the other school, or did we have to bundle?
I followed up on that originally with Dave. He checked the bid specs. They were not split in the original bid specs, but they were split by the architect for accounting purposes afterwards, so the entire bid was the lump sum for building.
Okay, so for example, if we go with B&amp;B and they have a 71-7 high school bid, and we bought the generator for 40, so that total's going to be 111.
111, correct.
And we had 300,000 on it, on the estimate?
We were a little high on the estimate originally, but there may be some additional costs on top of that as well. And we think this is, this shouldn't be a project we.
I mean, am I understanding that correctly, that it's that much lower than the estimate?
But weren't the generators, they weren't brand-new, they had some hours on them? Is that right?
Yeah, originally, we were thinking more along the line of $8,000 from the actual generator. We had a fire generator used, slightly used for $40,000.
Was the original estimate based upon new, or was it based on used?
I believe it was based on used.
It was a fluke. I think Dave said that it was a fluke that they were able, that he was able to find the ones that he was able to.
Yeah, we were very fortunate. They're a great operating order. We actually tried building them out before we finalized the purchase.
So is that, is that normal for us to look new first before we look used, or?
It depends on the circumstances. Typically, we wouldn't buy something really old that's got a lot of, it's ubiquitous, it's a lot of miles on it, a lot of hours, so it depends on the need.
And this will complete all the generator projects within the district, is that correct?
Currently, yes.
If not, can I have a motive then to approve? Is this 10-3?
So moved.
B&amp;B Electric to install and provide material? Brandon, thank you. Second?
Second.
Lisa? Betsy, please.
Yorayvich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yeah.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to 11 dot one, under financial, the levy update.
Nate, would you like to run this?
All right. The purpose of this presentation, and there's a lot of slides here, but I'll skip over a good deal of them, or go over them fairly succinctly and briefly. We had our tax levy put out in December, which was approved by the board. The extension for that levy came out at the beginning of this month. This is a recap of how that extension came out and subsequent funding reached particularly fund. So you could, you recall, the largest source in the district is, of course, the tax levy. It's a real stable and reliable source, and has been for quite some time. Roughly 67% of our revenues during last school year were local sources. That does include fees, tuition, like, but most of that would fall from the tax levy arena. Our levy for this year, our EAV came out at 693 million, 663,720, a 2.7% increase. Our levy for this year, our E A V came out at $693 million, $663,720, a 2.7% increase over the $675 million E A V last year, which was slightly better than I had projected as presented in my December presentation. The split on that particular increase this year and the last 10 years, 0.94% of that is existing E A V, and then we had a 1.81% increase in our new, or new property E A V, that's in that number. So we came out slightly to the good based on last year's number, and much better with our existing E A V than the prior year, as opposed to the previous year, 2012. Here is a chart showing our actual new property growth over the last 10 years. You'll see there at the far right, we came in at 12 point, essentially $12 million, new property growth for the year. My original projection, I believe, was at $11 million, so we were happy to see that additional 1.2 million come in on new property. But again, still fairly low compared to where we were at 10 years ago. This goes over what PTL is again. We are a tax gap county, so property tax extension limitation law does apply to us, which limits the amount of growth we have in our property taxes. It's further described here, so we can only- Increases in property tax extensions for existing property are limited to less than 5% or the increase in CPI for the preceding year, which is the end of December 2013 for this particular case. That limit does not apply to new construction. We haven't had a CPI of 5% since PTL was enacted back in the early 90s. Here's a representation of our tax gap counties. You'll see Central Holloway is heavily taxed yet. Our CPI again, 2013 was 1.5%, so that would be the minimum amount of increase in taxes under PTL to sit. And again, that's a number coming from 2013, the end of 2013, applies to the 2014 levy year, which again is used for funding for the 15, 16 school year. This chart here describes what happens as existing E A V comes in conjunction with CPI and the tax rate. We are in the second category there, or this middle, middle arena here. So given the CPI, if the existing E A V is decreasing, the tax rate will increase. Now, it's written a little misleading, actually means that E A V is increasing as fast as the CPI is high. So for 2014, the CPI being 1.5% is actually greater than the 0.91% growth that we had, which means the property taxes subsequently go up. Here is a chart for all of our funds and the tax levy there, too. So the far left column, you'll see our prior year extension for 2013. That is funding for this particular school year written out. You'll see our 2014 original estimated extension that I presented to you in December, $26,374,850. Our actual extension came out at $26,418,876, which is an $850,000 increase, a 3.31% increase from the 2013 extension to 2014's final extension. These numbers do not include debt as a separate non-operating piece of the extension, which we'll talk about here shortly. So you see there at the bottom, that 3.31 again is the 1.5% CPI and the 1.81% increase in our new construction, our new property. You see there at the far right, the actual differences. Our extension, again, can be shifted between funds depending on how we see, based on where our budget process is. So we've shifted some of that money out of the O and M, you'll see in particular, $450,000 reduction in the actual extension this year versus last year. You'll see a $1.7 million increase in the Ed Fund extension between the two years. Other items of note include the I R F Fund, $360,000 decline, social security, $154,000 decline. There's some marginal differences in the rest of the funds. Transportation, we went up $64,000. And I'll get more into the budgeting aspects of that as we get into the next presentation. The actual impact on our tax rate for 2014 compared to 2013, the fall right there, you'll see that we had a $4.48 tax rate 2013. That rate went up to $4.51, rounded up, for about a 2 cent increase in our tax rate for this year. You'll see there at the bottom, that difference again, our operating rate is $3.81, and our debt rate came in at just under 70 cents, which was on target, where the board will maintain that 70 cent tax rate for our debt. This is our tax extension rate comparison by, to last year's extension, so this is a little bit more broken out, includes the debt. So the first top half, I just showed you, extension versus extension, and the percentage increases there, too. Bottom half is all of our debt. You'll see in particular, additional bond increases in 2014 A B and C, and 2015 A B and C bonds that were all issued during 14, 15, and the end of 13, 14, all of this being on the tax schedules at this point. So our actually increase in the debt portion of that down here is just under 1%. And our tax rate there stayed fairly flat between those two, $140,000 increase for the debt portion of our tax rate. Total increase overall between the operating, which is our top rate there, and our debt rate of just under $1 million in new money for this coming school year. Bottom line, just want to show a quick reflection about how this will affect the average tax bill. This particular example with market value of $100,000, that would put your typical E A V after home state exemption at roughly $28,333, meaning about a $6.43 increase, which is a marginal increase from last year to this year, which is about 45 cents. Are there any questions on the tax, tax levy, tax extension presentation?
This was a great report, and I also have to commend you for your estimations. I calculated that you're a mere 2.5% off of your estimated extension versus the actual, which is really great. Really, I mean, under fund distribution?
Yeah, we were off by about $50,000 to the good, so we're happy to see that.
So like on this page, Nate, the, when you say, for instance, 2014 extension on the debt part, that's our payment, that's not our total debt, right?
No, the total debt there is at the bottom, so those will be the sum of all of our debt payments due from, in essence, May 1st all the way through April 3rd of the next year. There's a tiny gap in there that falls into place based on what the debt schedule needs to do, but that's correct, yes.
So the $31,200,000 is our total debt outstanding in bonds?
That's our total extension, so that's the money all coming from the county property tax revenues.
I'm right above it, the BNI subtotal, it's just-
That's just the, yeah, the 4.85 million is just the debt portion that due to our bonds.
Payments for the-
I don't know if you can answer this question, but it's something I've been thinking about. When we get our tax, our new tax money that comes in from the levy for properties and houses and stuff like that, do we also get some sort of number that we can compare as far as, you know, how many people, how many children are going to be in those homes? Or we just get the plain knowledge of, you know, the actual amount?
The county is not providing information to that.
Do we have a way of doing that, you know?
Not without any census, is what-
I mean, for strategic planning purposes, you kind of need to know, you know, where you're growing-
Sure.
And the population that's coming in with that.
Absolutely.
Got to find a way to do that.
You can pay companies to do it, yeah, that'll do a very thorough search of that, but we've just never done that.
Yeah, it could get very pricey.
Yeah. Their companies will do it.
Questions?
I'm curious, on the debt side, how much total debt do we have in bonds with all those years put together?
I'm concerned the schedule, it's one of our-
I'm putting you on the spot. You don't have any-
Yeah, I don't have my schedule there. We go out about 18 years on our debt, I think 15, 18 years. I don't know that about-
Is it broken down by year and then every day?
We do have the bond schedule out there, but we'll bring that back.
Do you have it broken down by year and then every day?
Yeah, whether it included our bond presentation-
Can you send that to me?
Sure can.
Could you just send it to everyone? Or just include it for next month's treasury report, whichever?
Sure can.
Yep, whichever you think is appropriate.
Every time they update it. Every time Ann or Tammy come, they update it for us. We'll bring us that one, but that's a good thing to have.
And then on the slide, I think it was 12, a couple of slides back? Yeah, there, back, the next slide. It looked, you, it looked like you moved money between funds. Who does that? Do we do it, or does the county do it, or?
We're able to move money in accordance with the actual profile caps. And for instance, the cap on the Ed Fund is $4, so that is a state statute, unless we have a rate referendum.
Because in his extension, he asked for a big dollar amount, and then we get to, you know, as a district, plug it into where it's needed. So he's looking at all those-
That's correct. So at the same time, joining us-
The budget assumptions of plugging it in where it's needed.
Within some parameters.
Right, right.
Correct.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Nate, that's very helpful.
Any other questions, comments? I believe this is an action item, but you need to, no, it's not, just information only? Okay.
Nate, you just have this one, unless it is information only?
It's information only.
Okay. Very good, appreciate it. Let's move on to 11-2, Preliminary Budget Update.
This one's information, too.
Okay. So as you're all aware, we are knee-deep in the budgetary process. Yeah, I've been for some time, so I wanted to give you an update of where that process is at the current time. So we made, we've made really good progress. I met with all the building principals and department heads, so we plugged in a lot of assumptions into our budgetary, budgetary numbers at this point. The numbers are certainly not static at this point, so we are continually making changes based on means and I mean from the principals and from other departmental admin. I feel like we are very close overall in our transportation, again, O and M budgets. I feel pretty confident that those will not deviate substantially, if at all, going into next year, with your consent, of course. So I wanted to show you where we're at on our assumptions for the numbers that we're about to show you. Again, these are all purely assumptions, subject to change. I note that at the bottom there, everything is tentative, but they're based on the best information that I have available right now, and our best guess at, in particular, where our state aid will fall for next year. So see at the top there, our tax levy assumptions, we just kind of went over. For the Ed Fund, we bumped additional $580,000, really over from the O and M fund. That was a result of being able to decrease our overall expenditures, which generally in O and M for next year, in fact, substantially. I'll get more into that here as we show those numbers on O and M specifically. That was an area where we could shift some of that money over to try to help our Ed Fund boost our ability to operate there within that operational fund for education. Our transportation fund, we have $34,000 increase in extension from the prior year. Our general state aid, again, is certainly a guessing game, continues to be for districts across the state. We have held firm that we only expect three or four mandated categoricals, not only for this year, but also for next year, based on speculation that's out there. I've heard of districts budgeting for two at this point, but I would feel comfortable saying that three is a, is a good number to work from. We've never had a year with just two categoricals, from my knowledge. And again, I would expect, worst-case scenario, we've had some overlap, we have categorical maybe third or fourth this year, come in late or early next year, and then receiving another two payments next year as well for a total of three. Our general state aid is certainly a tricky one right now. Again, we are at 89% proration, and we have been for a couple of years now. But with the news that we just had with the two bills that passed, reducing our overall state aid significantly across the state, just to be able to pay bills for the state for the next few months, I, I think it's a conservative estimate to go ahead and bump state aid down to an 8% proration for next year. And yeah, I know it's being extremely conservative, but based on the fact that they cut 2.25% for the last quarter of this year, make a reasonable assumption that that could potentially take place in lieu of another revenue stream for state, state expenditures, be put out there by the governor. I don't see how we can sustain the 89% proration that we're under right now. So that would put us at about $880,000 decline in our general state aid, or 15% of our total state aid for the year. Again, combine that with the categorical reductions that equates to roughly $1.5 million decrease in our overall state aid for the education fund. Our other state grants, we're working on those currently, trying to determine where they're going to be at for next year, but a lot of those numbers don't come out, both state and federal grants, until later in the summer, including IDA. And then other resources are flat, based on this year's projections at this point. Our expenditure assumptions there at the bottom. Our Ed Fund, we have plugged in the $930,000 reduction due to the reductions of course that were approved last, personnel meeting, that's the salary portion thereof. It also includes the $21,500 reduction in the Ed and Stifling, as discussed as well. That, at the current time, the Ed Fund is assumed to have no increase in the certified salaries. Of course, we are under negotiations now, that certainly remains to be seen where that will end up, but that is the assumption that we are plugging in at this point for teacher salaries. All funds currently have a 3% increase in the non-certified payrolls per the E S P contract for next year. The benefits for the Ed Fund, a $270,000 decrease due to salary reductions. And then all funds, we've held efforts fairly flat across the board at this particular time. Areas of where we can find savings, I mean, we're really hard going through these particular areas, food services, we've seen a reduction in overall costs, anticipate a pretty fair amount of reduction this year in our food costs. Our goal, reduce $125,000 between last year's, this year's projection and next year's budget, a 6% reduction in food service costs. Technology, tentatively, I have a $105,000 reduction in our total costs. Again, that's an assumption that we'll need to work with Josh as he dives into the budgetary process in the weeks to come, but I feel like that's a fairly conservative number if we just bump up our technology budget within the education fund this year to work on some of the projects that we have been working on to get us back on track of the Ed Fund. The O and M Fund, $162,000 reduction in total costs, it's a 4% reduction in expenditures for O and M. And Transportation Fund, we've got $160,000 reduction in total costs, or an 8% reduction. And all of these reductions are a result of trying to find additional monies to be able to shift over to the Ed Fund like we've done with the levy, which is one reason I'd be able to shift some of that money over to the levy to accommodate the real need of our district, I mean, for the students and for the teachers going forward. Special education, one that we're still in process, and will be for the next few months, but we do have this doubt, no reduction in disaster placements. All expenditures, all other expenditures at this point are flat based on my projections for this year. Certainly, General Laurie and I have some discussions ahead of us to determine where that may lie next year. Certainly could be a huge shift depending on where we think our placements will end up, and our grant funding there, too, for next year.
Nate, this may be a dumb question, but I thought we pulled out a S A S A D a few years back. Is that not true?
I thought we did. Those placements at S A S A D are for a therapy day school, which was part of the withdrawal agreement. We started with, I believe, 15 slots we actually contracted where we could send students to, and then over the years, we've reduced it. So we're going down from four down to two, and we pay approximately $30,000 per slot in order to service students at the therapy day school.
But we are sending students there, then?
To.
Just directly to?
To.
Nate, typically, our students would behave-
They typically are students with behavioral needs.
The other way around, I'm missing their salaries. We currently have all the administrative salaries flat here as well for next year. Any other questions within the assumptions? Again, this is merely a snapshot in time of where things are. This is not going to be the final product by any means. We still have five months remaining before a budget has to be passed. It has to be passed in September. We certainly hope we can do that beforehand, again, based on negotiations and based on what we find out over the summer from the state, but this is what we're at right now.
Were there any reductions in the board's budget?
I haven't went through departmentally that kind of detail yet. So we've been through building budgets, so we've been through that area. Everything else pretty much is flat at this point with the other departments beyond the actual goal.
So if we wanted to voluntarily reduce our budget, we could do that?
We can. We'll get more into more detail over the summer as I do our departmentally based budget to show you where the differences are by my school and by these different departments, services, technologies, et cetera. So here's a picture of all of our operating funds combined at this particular moment in time. Again, this is Ed, this is O and M, this is Transportation, this is working cash for next year. I'll point out again, the preliminary, excuse me, the projected budget for this year, or final, I should say, still puts us at roughly a $1 million deficit for fiscal year due to a lot of things, but mainly due to the unexpected fourth band-aided categorical. There's speculation we may only get two, but again, at this point, we're hoping for three. We'll get that third one in June. This also takes into account the slight reduction we had in general state aid due to the governor's recent bills that were passed, as well as some other assumptions going through, detailed line item review by myself in coordination with other departments. Preliminary budget for next year, this particular time, puts us at a $37.6 million revenue stream for all operational funds. That is actually a $377,000 decrease, which is 1% decline. We'll see there in particular, the state sources are the main culprit. So right now, we're projecting a $940,000 reduction between this year and, excuse me, next year's budget and this year's projected numbers for state aid, main categoricals and for other state grants. The local sources there, you'll see about 2.3% increase, again, mostly falling within the tax levy parameters coming in there. Expenditures, $37,322,662 puts us at a surplus budget right now of just under $300,000, actually $280,000 for next year, which would actually give us a 4.35% boost in our fund balance, assuming a $6.4 billion operating fund balance is close to being accurate for this year. Again, a lot of assumptions going in these numbers. We just don't know where that state funding is going to turn out. And the other big factor is you don't ever really know where your tax money is going to come in. It could have late payers. Typically, we get about 45% of our tax money early, but in a bad year where people do not pay on time, it certainly can shift. So that is a big piece of the puzzle. We just don't know. We don't know that until the middle of June when our first substantial tax payment comes in from the county. Moving forward to our education fund. So again, about a $1 million deficit projected for this year. Again, state aid being the main culprit there. For next year, going in at just over $32 million for revenues, that's only a 0.11% increase. Again, the bulk of the state aid comes into the education fund, so you'll see that huge decrease, about $40,000 going through there to under $7 million to state aid. I'll make reference there to the far left in eleven, twelve, we had just under $10 million to state aid during that year. That's a $3 million reduction per year since 2011, 2012, since this year. That's 10% of our total operating receipts by year. Our expenditures for next year, initially, we got us at $31,571,893 for about a $1.4 million reduction at this point, which is a 4%, 4.3% decline, again, due mainly to the risks that we've proved at this point. So that puts us at about a $450,000 increase in the Ed Fund at this point, which is about a 23% increase on our reserves based on the $1.95 million that is estimated as we are ending for this year. Again, a lot of assumptions going through these numbers. The special ed is a large one that we really need to evaluate, and Jen and I are certainly underway in doing so. So that could certainly fluctuate our numbers significantly depending on what our needs are for special ed and where we can pull grant money to help cover costs as we can to best benefit the district and the students at hand. Moving on to our operations and maintenance fund. Again, projected this year, we're looking at projected surplus this year of about $270,000. Put our fund balance at just over $1.35 million. The year, our projected revenues for this year, $3,841,771, which is a $430,000 decrease from prior year, about 10% from my projected number this year. Again, all that is tax money that we diverted over to the Ed Fund to help cover additional expenditures there. Expenditures for the O&M Fund, $3,641,771. That's a $163,000 decline or about 4% overall for next year at this point, which would actually give us a level budget for next year for O&M. And again, this is my basis for moving the extension, tax extension money, shifting it from O&M, shifting some of it from O&M, some of it from I R F and from our social security fund up to Ed to help move some of those funds over for the benefit of the heart of the district for education. Transportation Fund, this year, we're looking at a potential $342,000 decline in our fund balance, which will get us down to just over $1.2 million. Our receipts at this point are estimated at $1,742,900 for marginal 1% increase of $16,000. Our expenditures for next year are budgeted at just over $1.9 million or $160,000 decrease in anticipated expenditures for this year, about an 8% decline in expenditures. That would still give us a deficit next year at the $166,000 range. Again, the categoricals coming into play here, you'll see, again, budget this year is just under $1 million in categoricals, going down to $722,000 for this year, significant decrease. Again, that's one of those categorical payments that we don't, we just don't see coming in this particular job share. So again, I feel comfortable at this point that we have a sufficient fund balance that if we're looking to take a reduction in transportation fund, it'd probably be the fund to do it at this point. But again, that's something we'll talk about in the months to come and we kind of dig deeper into the numbers and see where the education fund revenues are going to lie. That concludes this particular presentation. Are there any questions?
Our lower fuel costs, I see on the transportation and the O&M, you're reducing our expenditures. Does that beat fuel costs or is there something else going on?
That's a portion of it. We could build up the fuel where it will save, I think it was $150,000 of a two-year span.
About $110,000.
$110,000. So that's part of that reduction. But another big piece of that is no bus purchases for next year. Again, that's not something we can sustain. I see the V, we're going to have, well, we already have aging fleet, so we're going to have to look for potential leasing options or fly out purchases and what we can bear as we look down the road.
And then with the new building additions, you've got that factored in, I assume, that we'll have enough to cover that?
Yeah, I didn't present any of the non-operating funds at this point, but I will in the months to come.
But I do like Greg's idea. Let's do it. Can we tell you that we want to slash our expenditures as a board?
Well, first, I think you need to realize that there's mandatory board training by law that has to be paid for for the three of you. And I think you also have to realistically look at the benefit that board training provides, the board as a whole, and also look at how much does the board really spend in a year. And I can say that because I get to go to a conference for free, so I'm not losing anything by saying that here. So, but I think it's really premature to say something that if the board doesn't spend very much, and if we believe in professional development for our staff, why would we not believe in it for ourselves?
I guess my point was if we're cutting teachers, maybe we should bear some cuts ourselves. That's what my point is.
You have to know how to do your job.
My experience shows that we're relatively lean administratively in salaries and our expenditures across the board, not just board expenditures, but principal budgets as well.
Maybe this is a topic for a later discussion as far as looking at board expenses. I think there might be, there might be, there might be some reductions that can be made. I've asked District 186 what their policies have been, and their policy is that the district will pay for the tuition of the triple I conference, including new members, but the remaining portion of that trip to Chicago, travel and room and board is covered by individual board members, and that policy has been in effect for several years now.
No, that's not correct. It's only been in effect for one or two years.
Two, I think, several.
Several.
I believe two. So this is probably a discussion for a later date.
I'm just saying, let's lead by example. You made a really good case last week that we need to figure out ways other than cutting teachers, so start with ourselves, maybe. Let's look at it next month, maybe? Is that how we go about it?
What specifically you want to look at?
Just like, what are we spending? I mean, if I got to go to a conference, I get it. We got to do that. I don't need 40 bucks a day to eat, though, or I just... Okay.
Yeah, I think what the numbers are telling us today.
Only submit your receipts. Only submit your receipts, which...
We've had a $1.4 million reduction in teachers and other positions, and we're still only looking at potential $400,000 surplus for next year, assuming we hold the line on teacher salaries, administrator salaries at this point. So that tells us that we're in difficult times, and I'm not opposed to obviously going through line by line, and that's just my job. It's what I do. But there are certain points where it's a point of no return, and you're overcutting particular areas, and board members and educators and administrators all need training.
Well, and I think it's important when you think about the board training. I am assuming that all of us can afford to pay the hotel, pay the transportation ourselves, but what if someone is on the board who can't and therefore can't or won't go to the training? And I think that's an equitable thing we need to look at. We can maybe pay $500 for that weekend, but can everybody?
That'd be a good item to put on the agenda. I think we need to look at as many areas as we can.
And I would like to encourage that the discussion about that occur at the board table.
Correct.
Correct.
That's the place. So if we have some numbers, some preliminary numbers, know what we're spending, I think it's a good place to start. You may get any more questions on the preliminary budget update that they just presented? No, it's not information only? And we'll move on to eleven three, Resolution for Abatement of Working Cash Fund.
All right. Thank you, Steve. This particular item is winded. Really, we should have had on the agenda a few months ago, but legal, bond council is still working on the information. When we issued the $1.7 million working cash combines earlier this year, prior approval back in December, there has to be a resolution that will give us authority to move that money out of the working cash fund to be used for the purpose that you did designate, which is, at this point, for Fund 60, which is our capital projects fund to bridge that gap that we had for the GES building costs of the $1.7 million. This resolution does that. Actually, the way it reads, it actually allows us to transfer the money out over to our O&M Fund and then subsequently transfer the money over to our Fund 60, which is actually in section... Section five. So we have a state code that allows us to do this. This merely allows us to have that money over. The financials I have presented the last two months actually had that money already there, plugging that gap, but this gives us legal authority to do so. Are there any questions on this particular resolution?
So this is a permanent transfer from working capital to O&M. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, so at the end of all of this, Nate, these various resolutions that we will shortly approve, could you just, you have the numbers memorized, I'm sure, could you just then summarize all of the transfers we've made into the education fund over the last four months or so after we've approved these?
You'll see some of that on the Treasury Report. That would have been consent, so you'll see the transfers there.
Okay.
But yeah, those are all included there. The other two transfers you'll see is the next two items. Any more questions along this particular item?
Okay, so we need action on this one. How much of this, need to read all this?
Bond council tells us we should, yes.
Okay.
I know, I know. But you can start.
You want to get a cupcake?
They typically say in a resolution that it's the salient points, but I guess it would take longer to figure out what salient points were.
Resolution abating the working cash fund of community unit, school district number five, Sangamon County, Illinois, whereas the Board of Education, the Board...
He's passing it, I'm sorry.
...of community unit, school district number five, Sangamon County, Illinois, the district has here, two for created and maintained a working cash fund in and for the district of fund, and whereas the board has determined and does hereby determine that it is necessary in its best interest for the district to be abated, and whereas section 20-10 of the school code of the state of Illinois has amended, the code authorizes the board to abate the fund. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of Community Unit, School District Number Five, Sangamon County, Illinois as follows. Section one, incorporation of preambles. The board hereby finds that all of the recitals contained in the preambles to this resolution are full, true and correct, and does incorporate them into this resolution by this reference. Section two, amount of abatement. The fund shall be abated as of the date hereof by the amount of $1,664,230, the abating amount. Section three, permanent transfer. The school treasurer of the district is hereby authorized and directed to forthwith permanently transfer the abatement amount to the operations and maintenance fund of the district, the same being the fund of the district most in need of the abatement amount. It is also hereby found and determined that, A, the abatement amount when added to the operations and maintenance fund of the district, and regardless of any subsequent transfers of the abatement amount, will not result in an excessive accumulation of assets in the operations and maintenance fund of the district, and B, the balance to the credit of the fund, including the amount of any taxes heretofore levied by the district for the fund pursuant to section 20-3 of the code but not yet collected and deposited into the fund, and amounts transferred pursuant to section 20-4 of the code and to be reimbursed to the fund is at least equal to 5/100ths of a percent of the value as equalized or assessed by the Department of Revenue of the taxable property in the district. Section four, outstanding loans, if necessary, to effectuate such abatement and permanent transfer. Any outstanding loans from the fund to other funds of the district in amount, together with any cash immediately transferred pursuant to section two above, equal in the aggregate to the abatement amount, shall be paid to the operations and maintenance fund of the district, and any remaining outstanding loans shall be... of the district, and any remaining outstanding loans shall be paid to the fund at the time and in the manner required by the code. Section 5, transfer to capital projects fund. In accordance with the rules and regulations of the Illinois State Board of Education, specifically Section 100.50, D2 of Title 23 of the Illinois Administrative Code, the abatement amount shall be transferred from time to time to the district's capital projects fund to be used as provided in said rules and regulations. Section 6, severability. If any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this resolution shall be held to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason, the invalidity or unenforceability of such section, paragraph, clause, or provision shall not affect any of the remaining provisions of this resolution. Section 7, repeal or effective date, all resolutions or parts thereof in conflict here with, be in the same, are hereby repealed, and this resolution shall be in full force and effective forthwith upon its adoption. Are they awake? Adopted April 27, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any comments or concerns or questions? Betsy, please.
Yes. Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seron?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
And you, Raibit?
Yes.
Cut.
All right, moving on. What's that?
You've got two more to read.
I got to.
Can you just say, Dino?
Yeah, these, 11-4. No, no reason to read through these. I think we're okay. We didn't approve them last time we agreed. So the last two, 11.4, 11.5, are resolutions for temporary inter-fund loans. The first one is a resolution to transfer $230,000 from the Transportation Fund to the Educational Fund. We transferred an amount, last board meeting, I believe it was $200,000, I recall. This will give us additional funding within the education fund to keep our bank accounts above zero from the time being. The second one is a transfer from the O&M Fund to Education Fund, an amount of $150,000, again, for the same purpose. So this will be to keep us, keep our bank accounts above zero, operating accounts for the Ed Fund as required by state law. Additionally, just as a frame of reference, we are at the point at the time of year where we are going to draw our, off of line of credit. We've got today as our first draw from that line of $500,000, a $4 million line we have at Bank Springfield. I anticipate another draw at the end of the week for payable purposes in the amount of $1 million.
Is it allowable to move both of these as presented together?
Yes.
I'll second that. It was a motion, wasn't it?
Yes, it's a motion. It's always a motion. Did you get it, Dee? Yeah, I did. So we have a motion. We have a second to approve 11-4 and 11-5 as presented by the CSB. Any questions? Betsy would call a roll, please.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seron?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Raibit?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cut.
12, Communications, future board meeting dates.
I'm starting at 5:00 on Thursday.
Can you control it again, Matt? Can you control it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we're over there. Okay, you're okay.
I'm starting at 5:00 on Thursday.
Oh, we are, yeah. We have a student discipline hearing. Is that or after? How many can make it at 5:00?
I can't.
Can't? 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 Are you going to make it?
Thirsty. It's a crap shoot right now.
5:30 is when you said...
We start...
We are, okay.
At 5:30, you said...
I can be at 5:30.
5:30 is when you said, so...
Yeah, I can make it.
It doesn't matter. It's just, I just, I have a meeting from 4:00 to 5:00 in Springfield.
Mr. Lee, is that student discipline hearing still on?
It's not on. Excuse me?
Is the student discipline, the...
I believe so.
Okay. I didn't know if it was delayed. I hadn't heard from the hearing officer.
He was, he was in today, if you're right.
Okay, okay.
You should do it at 5:00 if you can, because it's not fair.
If we have the majority of the board, we would like to still do it at 5:00.
So 5:00 on April 30th?
I think it's posted correctly. I think it's just not here. But I'll double check. It's all closed session, so the first part would be from 5:00 to 5:30 would be a student hearing, discipline hearing, and then 5:30 to 6:30 is the board's prep for negotiations, and then at 6:30 to 9:00, we meet with the CCI team. So let me make sure that it's posted accurately before I leave tonight.
Then we got a regular board meeting on May 18th and one on June 20th. So we have all this going on.
What about all the maybe meetings, 25 maybe, for the rest of our lives?
You're waiting for them.
Oh, we can. Oh, right. Yeah, it is correct, and board docs for 5:00.
Just a thank you for touching my computer night. Okay, very good.
Okay, that was information only. 10.02.2, it's an opportunity for visitors to address the school board on any topic. Harry Dunn, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Let me move.
Second. All in favor, 65 to say aye.
Aye.
All right, everybody, thanks for coming.